I'd like to bring this month's meeting on the Metro Historic Zoning Commission to order. First, I'd like to adoption of the agenda.
There are two things to come off consent. 1430B Greenwood, or one thing, and then I just wanted to check and see if the commissioners had anything else they might want to pull from the consent agenda for discussion. So that's our only change then, is that 1430 Greenwood will be discussed at the end of the agenda.
Okay, thank you very much. Recognition of council members. Councilman O'Connell.
Now I'm live, okay, there we go. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, commissioners and staff for recognition today. We have, under overlay recommendations and design guideline adoptions, there are actually three on the agenda that are all very closely related. I'm here mostly to speak because in a conversation that began over a year ago, I actually came to staff to look at, we had, on the southern boundary of the district, as many of you know, later tonight, there is a series ending this, a grand finale for this series that the Tennessean has run called The Cost of Growth and Change, and I think District 19 in particular has seen an extraordinary amount of both growth and change, and we do deal with the challenges there. These design guidelines updates, I think you will, you probably already have heard from staff, look to address things that haven't been addressed in decades, but separately from a lot of the issues that are covered in those design guidelines, I had looked at, knowing that we had already seen some approvals for south of Broadway, just south of the Broadway District in particular, along First Avenue, some extraordinary opportunities for things that enhance the riverfront, enhance engagement to the bridge, which, as you all know, is its own historic artifact and asset for the service of the southern edge of that district. And looking at what's possible in a couple of the vacant parcels there, and, you know, I'm very pleased to see that there is a staff recommendation in here that would accommodate some exceptional design, and I know, I think some members of the project team, as well as some other interested stakeholders are here to speak to that. And I've partnered with staff on some engagement about the rest of the package of guidelines for those three contiguous districts that serve downtown and really have provided an extraordinary amount of character, charm, but also frankly, I think they've been at the heart of powering an extraordinary economic engine for both the city and the state. The hard part about this moment is that I think these two conversations wound up becoming one, and so there has been this push from the merchants and the community of stakeholders within the boundaries of these guidelines that are still kind of wrestling with and chewing over changes, and I know despite some of the community input we've already gathered in a round of edits from staff, I think there's still an appetite for looking at that, continuing to collaborate among the community of merchants and property owners, myself, some of the other stakeholders, including historic staff, and I think ultimately, you know, another conversation before the commission. I think my request today would be, could we look to conclude the conversation about the issues specific to height, and I think staff will be able to guide you directly to where that is in the guidelines, and then maybe continue a little bit to look at the rest of the package. I think I am among those, and I think most of the people that have participated in this conversation recognize that it is high time to revisit these guidelines with the introduction of rooftop amenities and other things that have changed in Lower Broadway and in Nashville in particular. I think it's absolutely appropriate to continue consideration of those, and I think that this commission would do well to give serious consideration to those guidelines when they come back. But I think what I'd like to do today is say, can we go ahead and get the height portion of the guidelines considered almost as its own independent piece, and then look to consider the entire package after a deferral with some more community input? So that would be my request to both staff and commissioners today, is look at that height piece, consider it independently on its merits. I am in support of the guidelines that's drafted and recommended by staff on that front, and then I'd love to have an ongoing conversation with the merchant and property owner community, particularly in the Broadway District, but I think looking at all of those because there has been such extraordinary interest on that front, and that's what I, I think that's probably our best outcome here, that will let us get that growth and change piece considered with all of the preservation work that you all do that is so important to the heart of the city. So, thank you very much for the time this morning, or this afternoon, and I can't stay for the whole meeting, but thank you.
Okay, thanks, thank you, Councilman. Before I recognize any others, let me, if you would help me with that, Robin, so we're basically being asked to defer everything in J except for the height, and all of K and all of L for, is that correct?
That's correct, and may I suggest that since there, I'm assuming there's a lot of people here for this, that we go ahead and set another date for that, and maybe that would be the February agenda.
Okay, so we were going to defer, defer that for two months, so just, just since there is a lot of people here, I'm going to just make sure we kind of get that clear. Do I, legal, do we need to get a motion for that, or since, since the commission is the actual applicant?
Right, now, I believe because the councilman and staff are the applicant, they've requested deferral of that part of the application, so they can defer it. It may technically have to go until the January meeting, but it'd also be with the expectation that it will be deferred again and actually heard at the February meeting.
Okay, so, so, okay.
Mr. Tibbs, point of, will notice need to be given beyond deferral in this meeting, or will it just maintain its presence on the agenda in terms of those that are present here or might want to be present in the future?
Because the meeting last month was noticed, and deferred at that meeting, and deferred to today, and then deferred today until another specific time, it won't have to be re-noticed. But certainly, part of this deferral will be community meetings, and so we'll be able to notice that February agenda when we're having those community meetings as well.
And I will say, for my part, representing the district on council, I'm absolutely going to make sure that we do as much kind of outreach and awareness for that, the process after today. Thank you.
Okay, so just make sure I understand, so we are deferring all of J except for the height, we will hear public, open up public hearing for that. We're deferring all of K, and we're deferring all of L. Okay, are there any other council people here that would like to speak before we go any further? Okay, seeing, anyone else, any other council, I'm sorry Nancy, I'm sorry, I looked right past you. Okay, okay, thanks. Any others? Do you have a motion to approve last month's meeting minutes?
Motion to approve last month's.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
All opposed.
For each case, there will be a public hearing. We ask that the applicant keep the preparation to under 10 minutes. They may reserve two minutes as a rebuttal. We ask that the public keep their comments to two minutes unless they are representing an organization or a group, and they may have five minutes. So, back to the applicant, you have 10 minutes basically, then you can save two minutes at the end. Appeals to the decision from Historic Zoning Commission pursuant to the provision in Section 2.68.03 of the Metropolitan Code of Laws. Notice is hereby given that a final hearing before this commission is appealable to the Chancery Court of Davidson County of the Circuit Court of Davidson County via statutory writ of certiorari. Your advice, seek your own independent legal counsel to ensure that your appeal is filed in a timely manner and that all procedural requirements are met. You should also seek independent legal advice regarding the applicability of writ of certiorari to the specific decision of Historic Zoning Commission. First, we do the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda will be voted on at a single time. No individual public hearing will be held, nor will the commission debate these items unless a member of the audience or the commission requests that the items be removed from the consent agenda.
Okay. First, 1430B Greenwood was removed from consent. 1438 Roberts Avenue is new construction. 1621 Forest Avenue, new construction of an infill. 1624 Gartland, new construction of a Dadoo. 305 Broadway, new construction of an addition. 3614 Richland Avenue, new construction infill. And 1404 North 14th Street, new construction of an addition. Staff has reviewed all these projects and finds them to meet their respective design guidelines. We recommend approval with conditions.
Okay, any questions for staff about any of the items? Opening up public hearing, or anything on the consent agenda that anyone would like to have removed? Okay, oh, he's waving, I thought he was saying something, but seeing unclosed public hearing, motion to approve consent agenda? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
All opposed.
All opposed? Okay, motion carries. Overlay recommendations, starting with 312E Marthona Road.
Councilmember Van Reese is requesting historic landmark for Hank Snow's Rainbow Ranch, which comprises approximately three acres at 312 East Marthona Road in Madison. A national register nomination has been researched and written by the Center for Historic Preservation, so all of our historic information comes from that research. The property is significant as the home, office, and studio of country music singer-songwriter Clarence Hank Snow. It includes multiple buildings and structures. It is the best excellent property most strongly associated with the productive, significant career of Hank Snow, a member of the Country Music Hall of Fame. Snow began recording with the RCA Victor label in 1936. This relationship lasted continuously for 45 years, a record not matched by any other recording star in the 20th century popular music, and produced over 800 commercial recordings, many of which are charted on both the radio and sales charts, and influenced generations of country and Americana performers. Staff suggests that the MHC recommend a council approval of a historic landmark overlay for 312 East Marthona, and to use the existing design guidelines for historic landmarks to guide future alterations, finding that the building meets Section 5 of the ordinance, Section 17.36.120. Did you have any questions for me, the councilmembers here?
Okay, any questions for Robin? Okay, thanks, Robin. Okay, Nancy.
I am Nancy Van Reese, I'm the councilmember in District 8, and I'm a proud representative of a number of different Opry historic homes in the area, and we're going to try to bring them to your attention one by one. Of course, first with the Maybell home over on Gibson, which has been a successful historic landmark, and now with the Hank Snow property. This is a unique situation in that a lot of folks, as historic as Mr. Snow was, a lot of the new people moving to town may be familiar with some very popular names, but maybe not Hank Snow, and we're trying to change that a little bit. If you know anything about Hank, you start falling in love with him. So I wanted to let you know that the neighborhood supports this, and will be having a community tour on January the 13th before it hits the planning commission, if approved here today. I do have a note from the immediate neighbor to this property that was unable to come because of a sick child, and he wanted me to read this for you. "To whom it may concern, my name is Jeff Weems. I live at 308 East Marthona Road, next to the Rainbow Ranch property, of which the owners are seeking an historic landmark overlay. My wife and I have watched the former Hank Snow home transformed from a neglected property to one that we are proud to be neighbors of. Cal and Sandy Blackney, the owners, have not just refurbished a home, they have truly restored the legacy of the home and the country music legend. They have recovered many of Hank's personal belongings and have decorated the house and the property in a manner which illustrates his contributions to Nashville, the Grand Ole Opry, and country music. It's refreshing to see this type of involvement from owners, especially when we see other historic properties being raised or allowed to fall into a state beyond repair. When we heard Jimmy Snow was going to put up the house for sale, we were worried that the property would merely be flipped and historic value of the home would be lost. We are very happy with the result of Cal and Sandy's hard work and attention given to Hank's long and storied career, and the warmth they have shown to the neighborhood. Though through many of our interactions with the Blackneys, we are confident in their ability to preserve this historic home and support Madison and Nashville's musical history. We hereby support unequivocally the designation of a historic landmark overlay for the property at 312 East Marthona Road, known as Rainbow Ranch." Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. Okay, open public, oh yeah, open public hearing, would anyone like to speak regarding this case? Okay, seeing unclosed public hearing, discussion, or motion?
Mr. Chairman, I think this is a great example of the community coming together and embracing the history. It's exactly what we all like to see happen in these communities, it enriches the community. The owners should be applauded, and I move for approval.
Okay, have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Okay, have a motion and a second, all in favor?
All opposed.
All opposed? Okay, motion carries. The next one is the portion of the Broadway Design Guidelines.
So just to recap, as you just did, the downtown and Second Avenue Design Guidelines are deferred. We're going to be talking about just a portion of the Broadway Design Guidelines, specifically the height recommendation. That's on pages, primarily on pages 34 and 35, that's Sections 3A and B of the Design Guidelines. As Mr. Councilmember O'Connell mentioned, he had asked us to look about a year ago at where in the overlay might there be some potential for additional height. So staff looked at these two areas, they're outside of the national register boundaries, but still within the overlay, they're an area where there is not very much historic context, and physically, because of alleys, they, any new construction there will not be directly abutting a historic building. So for those reasons, your report also includes public comment that was given last month, because, Chris, this is a deferral. You've also received public comment, new public comment in that staff report and via email. So the staff recommends approval, this gives you a better idea of the height and how it compares inside and outside the overlay. So staff suggests the approval of the proposed text revisions to the Broadway Design Guidelines for Sections 3A and B, and specifically that is about height regarding infill design, new construction. Any questions for me?
Is there a height standard, or just that we are approving that the revisions are there?
This is a recommendation for revision. The guidelines are already set up to allow for additional height as you move south of Broadway, because there's less historic context in those areas, so this is a continuation of that method of allowing additional for height, but it will be significant, it will be 18 stories, is the current recommendation.
Okay, okay, any questions for Robin? Okay, we may have some more for you later.
Okay.
Okay, open public hearing, maybe we'll start off with the people who are for this. If you would come up to the mic and just say, state your name and address.
Good afternoon, I'm Joe Farrell, 1179 Pinoc Circle, Brentwood, Tennessee. I'm a member of the Congress group, part of the development team of the neighboring project at 151 First Avenue South. So we're here in support of this revision for the new construction height outside the national register district. You know, we feel the height proposed is very appropriate for the area and how it's, the areas continue to develop. You know, there's thoughtful thought around the activation of First Avenue and the West Riverfront Park with world-class structures coming online surrounding that area. We think it's appropriate for the surroundings. In the immediate area by our project site, it will set the stage for revitalization that allows increased pedestrian walkability, enliven the area below the Singletary Pedestrian Bridge, which we think is key to that whole developments. Historic staff and planning obviously have given this a lot of thought, as they think about the evolution and how to recreate a respectful design and the mix that will benefit Nashville long-term. So we're very supportive of this concept, we think it's appropriate, and we'd like to look towards, you know, as we think about approving the height outside of the national register district, I think it's good for the city, good for the general core of Nashville overall, and the continued development. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Michael Hayes, I'm with CB Raglan Company. We are neighboring property owners. My address is 2720 Eugene Avenue, Nashville, Tennessee 37211. We've recently completed 222 Second Avenue South. We own properties at 105 Malloy, 101 Malloy, 400 Broadway, and then have investments on other properties along Broadway and Second Avenue North and South. We've been working with planning, zoning, and having conversations with historic folks over the last 15 years about height changes south of Broadway. We were 15 years ago limited to five stories, core frame zoning. That zoning policy really ended up in every historic building being demolished throughout the neighborhood. The sites in question, at least the First Avenue site, there had been a building there historic, previously it was a historic building that was destroyed in the tornado that ripped through downtown. I see this exhibit, and it's a, it's a great exhibit that shows what the step backs that we've discussed for so long, with Broadway being the center of the building stepping back up. What isn't shown is the, you know, the existing Hilton as well, which is behind this, that is equally distant from Broadway as this proposed building, and has historic buildings in front, and that really has worked well. For us, you know, on First Avenue South at 222 Second, from First to Second Malloy to Mumbrian, looking at this block, the Market Street apartment block, which Mr. Farrell just discussed, it is, it's critical to see First Avenue redeveloped, to really activate and animate the park, and to bring people around the corner. We fully support this and hope that the planning, or the historic commission will give this strong consideration to pass just this portion relative to the other pieces of this ordinance. We'll certainly talk with you guys when you engage the community members here in the next couple of months.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you for your consideration.
Good afternoon, I am Terry Clements, I'm with the Nashville Convention and Visitors Corporation. I am recirculating a letter that was sent to you in November for your meeting, and it was over Butch Spiriton's signature. We strongly believe in this, and we believe in it for a number of reasons. It is an innovative way to fulfill the needs of our downtown entertainment district. The Music City Center has been successful beyond any of our wildest dreams, and we had some pretty good dreams. So we found pretty quickly, we didn't have the first-class hotel rooms, and we didn't have the hotel rooms within walking distance. I'm sure you've heard a lot about the number of hotels that have been built, we still could use a few more, and particularly in an area that has had no activation under the bridge or on either side of that bridge. Most important to us is the music venue that will come with this. We got a lot of honky-tonks. This is not a honky-tonk. This broadens the Music City reputation in a, in an area that, right now, we are not well represented. So I strongly recommend the height variance on this, we think it would be an incredible addition to that neighborhood, and activate First Avenue, which sorely needs activation.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Good afternoon, my name's Tim Dugan, and I represent the district, the district of the nonprofit organization that oversees the economic and historical revitalization of the districts made up of Broadway, Second Avenue, and Printer's Alley, as well as the contiguous areas surrounding those areas. We also represent many of the merchants that are in those districts. Many of those folks are part of the district and have been here for many, many years. Others are all brand-new. We have discussed these provisions with them, and from all indications, we are certainly in support of the height changes that are being proposed. We think, as many of my colleagues have just mentioned, certainly activate that First Avenue area. It's a corridor that needs some development. We have a riverfront that is not being completely utilized. This type of development is certainly going to fill and certainly help build a greater Nashville. Mentioning Terry has had greater dreams than many of us could have imagined. This is just another one of those things that is going to make us better in the long run, and we are in full support of that, the district, along with the merchants that make up the district. Thank you.
Thank you.
Charles Robert Bone, I reside at 1123 Nickel Lane, Nashville, Tennessee 37205. I'm a partner in the Acme Feed and Seed, which is next door to the proposed development. Obviously, that development has been a vacant parking lot for the last 20 years, I think now going on to its, its third decade. We've reviewed the design, we've met with the development team, and think it's entirely appropriate based on what they have requested, both as it relates to the historic character of what's there, and relates to our building next door, but also, as several other speakers have noted, as you begin to imagine the development of First Avenue and what that would begin to look like. So we think it's entirely appropriate within the district, we think it matches well, certainly with our building next door, and then certainly from an economic development opportunity, we think this is appropriate.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, I'm Tom Turner with the Nashville Downtown Partnership, 150 Fourth Avenue North, and I reside at 4321 Prescott Road. Makes me, makes it easy to remember with the numbers in order. Appreciate all the hard work that you all do. We think that the, all the historic districts downtown are really incredibly important to having an active and vibrant downtown, and we don't want to lose sight of the preservation of the buildings and the property within the district. We think that the addition of this property on the south edge of the historic district, actually outside of it slightly, activates the street level on First Avenue. It activates the space under the bridge, which is incredibly important, and provides a nice fabric, street level-wise, along First Avenue, as you go between Broadway and Korean veterans in the bridge. We also appreciate the design, and it really bridges the gap, if you will, between what we have three and four-story buildings, and just a few feet south where we're in the 30-story range. I think when you look at it from the skyline perspective, it's incredibly important to have that bridge, and we really appreciate the work that's been into the design. And again, the Nashville Downtown Partnership thinks it's a great, a great investment for downtown. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, my name is Steve Marr, represent MJM Architects and MJM Real Estate, and I'm speaking on behalf of the ownership of 105 Broadway and the controlling interest of one of the parcels in question under the height guidelines. I want to say thank you first to Tim and Robin and their help over the I want to say thank you first to Tim and Robin and their help over the past many months as we have been developing our plans for 107 First Avenue. Thanks also to Doug Sloan as well, and certainly Councilmember Freddie O'Connell. Our conversations and your input over the last many months are appreciated, and we believe they contribute to what we believe to be a high-quality development that is contextually appropriate for the modern and developing historic district. And this project will contribute the kind of economic vitality that is the lifeblood of the historic district. Very briefly about the project, as you've heard, it does include a hotel and a live entertainment venue, and it will connect to the Siegenthaler Pedestrian Bridge. And this is all taking place on a site that was previously a surface lot or has been a surface lot since 1998 when the tornado forced the demolition of an existing historic property. That project now is, of course, there are no remaining historic assets on that particular piece of property. And I want to draw your attention again to the graphic that you see on the screen here. It's illustration of the two parcels in elevation form here, as they relate to the historic districts. A very clear illustration, we believe, that the recommended guideline for height of the new construction of these parcels, which is outside the National Historic Register District, is entirely consistent and appropriate with the existing and previously approved structures.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Next.
I used to have my name called out just before I stepped up. This, my name is Doug Sloan, I'm the Director for the Planning Department for the Metropolitan Government, and I reside at 5204 Smart Drive, Nashville, Tennessee. I want to thank the historic staff, they have worked with us and with the development team to look at what type of development here would be appropriate, both in massing and how it meets the street and how it relates to the other buildings in the area. One of the things that we've worked with the development team to do is to have them have stepbacks from First Avenue so that at the street, it will read the height that the ACME building is. And so, we were sensitive to that, activating the street, getting nice wide sidewalks, because we do expect an increase in pedestrian activity going up First Avenue from this direction, and also helping to activate the street. We've done a pretty good job, I think, with Mr. Haynes's project and with Joe Farrell's project that's coming in on the other side of the bridge, of working with those teams to activate the street, to get a lot of activity right across from the park, but bringing that all the way down to the historic district, I think, is key, instead of just having that parking lot, but be able to have something that activates the street. And I think this team has done an excellent job of that and done an excellent job of adding some, another venue to Music City. Some of the other things that we looked at was how it approached the bridge, how the structure itself did. When we worked with the Congress group on the other side of the bridge, one of the things that we pressed them to look at was how the building meets the park, and it's actually a park that sits just below the bridge in between these two parcels. And Joe and his group were kind enough to agree to put some electrical outlets, some water outlets, and our vision was to have, be able to have a farmer's market under there, be able to have, to activate that space and make it a place that people will want to go to, a destination. And we've worked with this development team to do the same thing on the other side, so that it not only allows for that space, but facilitates that activity. So, we hope that you'll find in favor of the height. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any others like to speak, like to speak and support? Okay, now I can open up to anyone who would like to speak against this revision.
I'm Paula Middlebrooks, and I'm a Nashville resident. I live downtown at 239 Fifth Avenue North, but today I'm speaking on behalf of Historic Nashville Incorporated, and I'm a board member for that group. Historic Nashville Incorporated is opposed to the specific changes of the Downtown Broadway Historic District Design Guidelines listed in Section 3B3 regarding the height of infill, new construction, and states. Infill buildings which directly front on First and Fourth Avenues are a minimum of 250 feet south from the front property line of Broadway shall not exceed a height greater than 220 feet and 18 stories. 18 stories so close to Broadway is excessive for a historic district with two-to-four-story buildings and would have adverse visual effects to the setting of the historic district, specifically to the adjacent historic commercial buildings. We ask that the commission consider lowering the height allowance for the properties that fall within the section of the guidelines, or consider a more appropriate path to achieving development goals that would better preserve the character of this iconic district in downtown. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Stuart Winston, I live at 214 Sequoia Trail in Hendersonville. I work on development projects, including 120 Second Avenue. So, I guess why I'm here is y'all created this historic district and set up to protect it. You established the boundaries and the rules thereof, and if you want to take properties out of it, that to me seems like what you're essentially doing, because 18 stories next to six-story buildings, I guess, I understand the desire, but there are plenty of properties all throughout Nashville where we have the ability to go 20, 30, 40 stories. As a developer, I will tell you that this commission has great intentions and does great things, but no matter how strongly you try, there have been examples where smart developers have been able to figure out loopholes, and by doing that, they've been able to knock down historic buildings. And what you're doing, in my opinion, by creating this huge loophole, is you're giving people, similar to some of the people who spoke before, myself and others, a multimillion-dollar target on the other buildings in that, in the district. I would urge you to reconsider and think about what these actions have to do and their long-term repercussions and the law of unintended consequences.
Thank you.
My name is Frank May, I live at 228 Ensworth Place. I'm a fourth-generation Nashville and own about at least a half dozen buildings in the Broadway Historic District. I'm also a property owner adjacent to the First Avenue proposed building. I'm also a partial property owner of the, one of the ones on Fourth Avenue that you propose on my property to put an 18-story building, but I'm very much against it. Let's see, there are many reasons. The boundary that just were set up by the commission and revised in 2007 to protect the backside of Broadway District from high-rise buildings being built. That was why it started in the very beginning, the south side was added to protect high-rises from coming in. I don't understand what's changed at this point in time that used to change from that point of view. On page 42 of the existing code, "New construction should be consistent with existing buildings along a street in terms of height, scale, setback, rhythm, relationship, materials, orientation, proportion, and rhythm." There is no way, and I've been, I was an architect, I've been for this commission many times. You talk about compatibility. I don't know how anything like this is compatible to any of these. There's no, I've been turned down for a lot of things, not near this bad, for not being compatible. There's no way it's compatible. The supporters, as much as I'm supporting in activating the street and doing stuff, but you don't have to give a variance or create these new heights. I'm proposing on 120 next door, a building that's been approved by this that is six stories. It has restaurants, it's mixed-use, and it can be done economically. You don't have to dramatically chop off the historic district's head by making 18-story building. There's no compelling reasons why these people can't make economic projects fit within the existing guidelines of six-story. And just want you to know is, once you change this, as the previous person said, you're opening up Pandora's Box because you're increasing the property value, and people will find a reason. The Crab Shack can be torn down, Fourth Avenue can get a half a dozen high-rises in the district.
Thank you very much.
Please turn it down. Preserve the district.
Are there any others who would like to speak against this guideline change? Okay, seeing none, since we, you're the applicant, commission is the applicant, Robin, is there any appropriate for you to make a rebuttal, or is that a?
No, thank you.
Okay, closed public hearing, discussion.
I feel a little uninformed. I heard a lot of conversation about activating the street and some other things that sound good in a downtown district that I certainly would be in support of, and this illustration and a few words on a piece of paper is kind of what I have to go from for a building, and that graphic does not a building make. So, this is a discussion purely about height, right? I'm not missing anything here.
No, and I appreciate you bringing that up, because I thought of that too. There was a lot of discussion about a specific project and specific designs. We haven't seen any designs, so that is not, a specific project is not before you today. It is changing the design guidelines to allow for additional height in those two areas. Now, certainly, there is a specific project in place that will benefit from that, but we have seen nothing regarding that project, so that is not what you're looking at today.
And could you go back to that graphic that shows the lots again? Yeah.
In the staff's analysis, the hotel is, or the Hilton, let me be specific, the Hilton Hotel is outside of our consideration, but I think is a useful device in considering what impact a building can have on the backside of the historic district. And that's, if I'm reading this right, and I was at the hockey game last night and sort of looking at the top of the round auditorium and the top of that building, and those, from the, from the graphic are at about 150 feet, does that sound about right? Or is that illustrate, I'm sure the illustration is correct, it's hard to see the downtown Hilton, and this is in the same context, not quite, but nearly double that at its tallest, fronting the Shelby Street Bridge?
Okay. Was that a question? So, I'm gonna do like my other commission, I'm gonna put some of you guys on the spot to make sure we keep talking here, and I'm gonna go to my other architect here, Cyril.
You know, it's, the changing nature of what Broadway has become and what that district has become over the last few years is shocking, I think, for everybody. It's, you know, it's exciting, it's scary, it's all those things. And when we look at height restrictions and changing the guidelines for height, it's something that we have to look at seriously. However, it's hard to find the magic number. So, the Hilton's 12 stories, and you know, this is 18 stories. I think, to me, the graphic that's up on the screen now has helped me to sort of see the scale and proportion that we're looking at, and to see what kind of sun penetration we'll still have on Broadway. And so, you know, my sense is that being to the south there, the sun will be up over that and still reach Broadway. I think we still get daylight. So, I think the 250-foot distance from Broadway gives me comfort that it's set back that far. So, I think the real question is, what's the magic number? Is it 18? Is it 12? Is it 6? You know, we've heard all those. So, that's the real question that I think this commission has to look at, so.
Regarding that, I know that we're not looking at a specific project, but was, was 18 the number that was requested by a certain entity, and then it was, and then staff has found that specific number to be appropriate, or was it more of a discussion first on what's the highest appropriate for this site or this distance from Broadway, and then 18 came from that?
18 came from the discussions about what would be needed to, for that project.
Renee? Elizabeth?
Robin, could you tell me what currently is on the Fourth Avenue property that's also recommended to be excluded from the height guidelines?
It's also a vacant lot, parking lot.
Right, oh, okay, it's that parking lot? Okay.
So, then, this is, this graphic, again, make sure I'm comprehending all this correctly, the graphic that is currently shown now includes really only two parcels or a collection of parcels that don't have historic assets currently on them that would permit this height, or in this zone, you could have 185 feet kind of anywhere?
No, and first of all, there is an error here. It says 15 stories, it should be 18 stories, 300 feet back, like it says in your draft design guidelines. So, the, when you're moving south of Broadway, that first long line that's the diagonal dash, the 150 feet back, everything in that area can now be six stories. And then you go back and you see this dotted area, which can be seven stories. So, then, we get away from the entire stretch of south of Broadway, and it's just those corners where that additional 12 and 18 stories is being recommended. Does that answer your question?
It answers that question. It's curious that those, surely there was some distilling of properties or something that these were considered significant, ones across from?
We looked at those corners because they are in areas where there's not much historic context, and physically, there will not be new buildings butted up against historic buildings because of side and rear alleys at those two locations. And so, that is why we, those are the most appropriate places for new construct, for more height. In those other areas, those vacant lots, potentially, a building will be butted up directly against a new build, an existing historic building, just like you have all up and down Broadway, you know, it's building to building. But those two areas have alleys.
Is the, is the graphic correct? Where it says 300 feet back, 180 feet, and I think you corrected that at 18 stories, that little postage stamp is where that?
Those two.
Ribbon would happen at 18 stories?
That's right, those two, in each corner.
What's the scale here is, what, that's 40, 60 feet deep?
No, it's probably...
I'm thinking on 122 specifically.
It's probably closer to 150 feet deep.
Okay, the right away is...
But I don't have that information.
All right, the right away is what's confusing. I'm just trying to get an idea of the scale of a building that turns two corners at Symphony Place that's that tall. Anyway, I think it's, I'm understanding the graphic more clearly, thanks.
Eric? Madonna? No?
And I guess kind of something that Commissioner Mosley just said, Doug mentioned a step-back from the street, is that, so is that all happening on those one lots? Like, didn't he mention?
You've got that sort of brown square with all the little dots in it, so that would be one. And then, as you continue to move south of Broadway, you'd go up higher to 18 stories, so that it's stepping up from Broadway.
So, Robin, if we approve this as currently proposed, what I understand is that we could have an 18-story height right on Fourth Avenue and right on First Avenue. Is that correct?
If you, yes, if you wanted to approve this, that's what you would have.
On Fourth and Symphony and Fourth and, what is that, Shelby and?
First.
First, yeah.
Question also for staff in terms of the interaction between the landing of the Shelby Street Bridge and the vista to the Shelby Street Bridge was, is there some study, drawing, section, you know, elevation that illustrates this impact? I mean, we can see it with the buildings across the, on the other side, but I think, I guess I'm thinking of the U corridor from the historic district and...
And if and when a project is proposed for that lot, that is absolutely something we'll look at, and I'm sure you will look at, but we don't have a specific project in front of us today, so I don't... So, I don't have, other than just boxes, that's all we've seen. There's been, we, if there are existing drugs, we haven't seen.
What I, and I, there doesn't have to be necessarily a specific building, but having an 18-story thing that's as big as a rectangle, unadorned, that's as big as this building that's 18 stories tall, will have more than just a little bit of impact on Shelby Street Bridge. This, it just seems, that's no small thing, I guess, I'll leave it at that.
I think I just need a little bit of clarification because of public comment that it sounds specific to a project, and we're looking at the general rule. But it sounds like there has been some discussion about this particular project. Is that correct?
That's where all this came from. There was a request for that additional height, but we have not seen the specific project.
Just discussion, no plans?
Correct.
More discussion? Only making a statement that I do, you know, we've all thought about this and had seen this last month, too, but does, it is away from the National Register District that we try, we've been working hard to try to protect. Seems like it's, in my, the point, my opinion I'm making, I feel like it is close to the edges. If you go back to that last, the one we keep going back and forth to, just where it is, away from Broadway, it does not seem to be detrimental. I think the point, Cyril, you brought up too about the sunlight to it, you know, we're kind of pushing it away. On the edges, I think it's important, and, I mean, it's, makes it a little bit different. I think even, I actually think the relationship to the bridge is actually gonna be all right as well. But anyway, you know, I'd have a whole different feeling, maybe if you would set the whole block, you know, the whole big area. But I think those corner, and even the corner pieces, like I said, this is just my feeling about it, those corner pieces makes it more appropriate as well, but. With that said, is there any more discussion? I don't want to belabor the point.
So, I think one of the things that will happen because of market forces, I think we'll have a very animated street level, lot of retail, lot of interaction with the streets. So, it's not like, you know, some of the former buildings that just slammed down into the sidewalk with no relationship there.
Exactly.
So, I think from that standpoint, that will influence the buildings positively. I think the supporters that we've had have made good statements. They're people that we respect and having driven our city into what it's become now and the vibrancy that we have. Based on that, and, but respecting Historic Nashville's comments, based on that, I would move for approval of this height limit.
You have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, any more discussion?
I do have another question. So, in, since it's not in the National Historic Registry area, would we, would we review those First Avenue, just for clarity?
It is in the overlay, so you will absolutely review any new construction, whether or not this change happens in those areas.
Okay, so we would still have the overview of whether it's within the height, whether it's in, under design guidelines, if it's appropriate, if it's, you know, abutting a story-
Not necessarily the height issue, because if you do approve this change, then you are saying that is an appropriate height.
Within the guidelines.
But yes, you will review everything else, just like you would, without changing it.
Let me have clarity one more time. Just that, within the guidelines, that it says if it's 200 feet or 100 feet, that it would have seven stories or a certain number of height. We would review it under those guidelines?
Correct.
Yes, just wanted to clarify. Thank you, Robin.
Brian, could I say something, too?
Please.
I appreciate everybody who came out and spoke about this important issue in an area of town that we all hold near and dear, and I don't want to discount Mr. May's request that his building, that he's had, and he and his family have been owners of property down there, and developers. I wouldn't be down there if it wasn't for that, that family. And I just wanted to say I understand and appreciate his concern, and however, the overlaying, if there were more merchants or other people in the area that, that were talking in concert with you, Frank, it would make a bit of a difference for me. As you pointed out, the development down there has been astronomical and beyond our wildest dreams when we started so many years ago. And so, I just wanted to say I appreciate your, your comments, I understand your position, and I just wanted to make that point.
Okay, any more discussion? All right, we have a motion, all in favor? All opposed?
Done.
Aye.
Okay, do you mind, let's just get a hand vote, so I can make sure. All those in favor, please raise your hand. One, two, three, four. All those opposed? One, two, three, okay. Motion carries. So, I'm going to go back to 1430B Greenwood Avenue, don't you think so? No?
No, we, we talked about saving consent items till the end, that your staff will have time to put together a presentation.
Oh, that's right, sorry about that, staff. Okay, so, we're gonna go to violations, 119 Third Avenue South. If everyone leaving could just remain more quiet till you get to the lobby.
119 Third Avenue South is a two-story commercial structure constructed circa 1920. It is a contributing building to the Broadway Historic Preservation Zoning Overlay. The Bryant, the building is currently the home of the Johnny Cash and Patsy Cline museums. The application is to install a new projecting sign. The signage design largely meets the design guidelines, except that there are exposed bulbs that are explicitly not permitted under the current design guidelines, and that the building has already far exceeded its signage allotment on its Third Avenue South side. So, the proposed sign meets the design guidelines in most respects, except for it has exposed bulbs, which are not permitted, and also, the building is already over its signage allotment, primarily because of signs that were installed without a permit. Of all the signs on the front facade, only the Johnny Cash projecting sign received a permit from the Metro Historic Zoning Commission. The signs on the interior of the window are not reviewed by MHCC. All the other signs that you see in this image are in violation as they do not, as they did not receive a preservation permit and do not meet the design guidelines. So, a little bit about the signage allotment for this side of the building. The building facade is 79 feet. Because there is a projecting sign, the calculation is 2 times 79, which is 158 square feet. So, they have an allotment of 158 square feet. The Johnny Cash projecting sign is 40 square feet. The proposed new projecting sign for the Patsy Cline Museum is 40 square feet. So, if the projecting, new projecting sign would be installed, the remaining square footage should be 78 square feet under the design guidelines. So, we go through and talk about the different signs on the front facade and how they may or may not meet the design guidelines. So, first, the painted wall sign at the top cornice area of the building. This sign was installed without a permit circa 2013. The sign is painted over a previously existed painting sign, painted sign. Since MHCC must review and approve all painting of masonry, staff considers the entire painted area to be part of the sign. The sign is four feet tall by 79 feet wide, because it goes across the entire front of the, of the building. So, its total square footage is about 316 square feet. The building has already used up its painted sign mural allotment of 125 square feet on the rear facade, which I'll show further on, in the, in the presentation. But just to say that this building, this is counted towards the signage allotment and is well over the 150 square feet or 78 square feet that's remaining. The wall sign, I'm not gonna dwell on this wall sign too much. It was also installed without a permit. I spoke to a representative of the owner today, and they have agreed to take that one down. So, it's same with the shingle sign that was also installed without a permit, but they have agreed to take it down. And you can see here, too, just there's a small sliver of the side that staff considers to be still part of the front facade, the Third Avenue South facade, and that was also painted without a permit. It is about, they didn't provide information about how big it is, but staff estimated that is about two feet by 24 feet, or about 48 square feet. So, staff is recommending that this sign be either removed entirely or reduced, so that the overall signage allotment for the building is no more than 158 square feet. So, here's a Google Street View of the building in 2009. The previous occupant, oops, sorry, didn't mean to go ahead. The previous occupant of the building had several large painted signs that were painted prior to the extension of the Historic Preservation Overlay, and which added up more than the current allotment for the building. Even though the signs were there eight years ago, all new signage must be brought into compliance with the design guidelines, and that includes not exceeding the signage allotment for the Third Avenue South side. The commission just last month determined that a building with a First Avenue North facade must meet the signage allotment for that building, as stated in the design guidelines, even though there were already on the building older painted signs that did not meet the signage, that were, you know, larger than what would be allowed under the design guidelines. So, you know, again, staff, you know, is saying that even though there were buildings, there were signs there of the similar size eight years ago, new signage should be brought into compliance with the allotment given in the design guidelines. So, just to recap, here's the kind of total square footage for the current signs, 316 feet for the painted wall sign, the projecting sign for Johnny Cash is 40 square feet, the two, the wall sign, which they've agreed to remove, is 80 square feet, and the side painted sign is 48 square feet, with a total of 484 square feet. So, before I move on to the signage for the rear facade, I wanted to discuss a gate, a roll-down gate over a doorway that was also installed without a permit. Section 2B of the design guidelines state that replacement doors should be compatible with the storefront. MHCC does not consider the style of door to be, to be compatible on a front facade of a building, and on historic buildings where there is no evidence of them historically. Enclosing an entrance does not meet Design Guideline 2B1, which calls for, quote, "original doorways, entryways, and related elements to be retained," unquote. Secondary, narrow recessed entries are typical of historic buildings like this one. The roll-up door encloses this typical entrance feature and dramatically alters the look of the recessed entrance. Staff finds that the roll-up door does not meet Section 2B of the design guidelines and recommends its removal. The applicant has stated the roll-up door was installed to prevent unwanted activity in the recessed area. Staff recommends alternative methods such as motion-detected lighting or alarms, or even placing the mechanicals for the roll-up door on the interior of the building, or of the interior of the recessed area. Before I move on to the rear facade, I did want to say, going back to the painted wall sign, this one, in their application, the applicant did say that they would be willing to reduce the size of the, of the painted wall sign, but they didn't give us any information of dimensions of what it would look like. And also, when we approved the Johnny Cash sign in 2015, I believe it was, they were also, at that point in time, supposed to reduce the signage, so staff would really need a clear signage package and information to understand what the proposal is. Going on to the rear facade. The rear facade of the building is visible from Fourth Avenue South because of a parking lot. A wall sign has been added to the rear of the building without a preservation permit. The sign appears to be vinyl, which is not an appropriate material for signage. Staff is recommending that this Patsy Cline sign be removed. So, the calculations, oops, calculations for the rear facade, the building facade over here is also 79 feet. On rear facades, the design guidelines state that they get one square foot per linear foot of the building, so they should have, they would have an allotment on the rear of 79 square feet. Their painted sign, the Johnny Cash Museum painted sign, is currently 75 square feet, so the remaining square footage is four square feet. The images of Johnny Cash are considered part of the mural, and they use up the 125 square feet of mural allotted for the entire building, if that makes sense. So, in conclusion, staff is recommending approval of the projecting sign with these conditions, that the following signs installed without a permit be removed, the Patsy Cline wall sign above the storefront on Third Avenue South, the Patsy Cline shingle sign on the Third Avenue South facade. Again, the applicant has agreed to remove those two signs, and then also, the Patsy Cline Museum wall sign on the rear, we are asking for that one to be removed as well. And then, number two, the Johnny Cash Museum painted sign above the second-story windows on the Third Avenue South facade, and the painted sign on the side sliver of facade on Third Avenue South be reduced in size, so that together, their square footage is no larger than 78 square feet. The applicant must submit drawings showing the size, location, and design of the new reduced signs. And three, all removal of paint to be undertaken in a way that does not damage the historic brick. MHCC staff should approve the paint removal method. And then, let's see, also, there should be a four there. Four, the projecting sign should not have exposed bulbs. With these conditions, staff finds that proposed signage meets Section 4 of the design guidelines. And then, going to the roll-down gate for the doorway, staff is recommending disapproval of the roll-up door, finding that it does not meet Section 2B of the design guidelines for rehabilitation of doors and entries. Staff further recommends that the signage and doorway violations be removed no later than January 30th, 2018, providing 30 days for correction. So, may I have any questions about the allotment and?
There's a lot. Do you mind going back to the graphic and then just, you know, can you do it from there?
Which one?
You know, do your recommendations, some of the graphics.
Sure, okay, yeah, sure, 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 yeah, okay. So, we are saying that the Patsy Cline sign is okay with the removal of the exposed bulbs, because they don't meet the design guidelines, and with several changes to the signage, so that the signage overall allotment is no more than 158 square feet. So, what we're saying is that these, I'll just use this picture as a kind of good overall picture. So, there's the Johnny Cash Museum sign painted at the top, and then, the one kind of on the small sliver of the structure on the side of the building, that those either be removed or be reduced to no more than 78 square feet combined, because that's the remaining allotment left for this side of the building. The applicant has agreed to remove the, the shingle sign and the vinyl Patsy Cline Museum sign, but that's also part of our recommendation, but they have agreed to do that. For the rear facade, we are asking that the sign with the box outline be removed. And they're only allotment, you know, if they want to come back with a sign which is four square feet, they'd be welcome to, or they can do some sort of combination with the Johnny Cash Museum, and, you know, they could alter the signage on the rear so they are in compliance. But right now, they only have four square feet remaining on that facade.
Okay, all right. Does anyone else have any questions?
More clarification?
Sure.
If the applicant wanted to keep all of the signage that was previously painted and make the argument that somehow it was grandfathered in, and make it compliant to this business, or advertising this business, if you will, then would the staff have recommended for approval the projecting sign? If it already exceeded the allotment?
The, part of the, with the projecting sign, it did go to the commission, and part of the approval was that they were supposed to reduce the size of the painted sign at the top, to, whatever the allotment was left at that point in time, which I don't, I remember what it was, so.
If the painted signage was in excess, we wouldn't have allowed then another sign, and then, yeah, yet again, another sign beyond that.
Right, exactly. Right, because we only allowed the Johnny Cash projecting sign, because they were supposed to have reduced these, the top band sign, but they installed the Johnny Cash sign without removing the top sign, or reducing the top sign.
I do have one question.
Sure.
Are we voting for this in three parts or just one?
I think that'd be a question for quad. So, do they, how many motions, do they do two separate motions, or how many motions would they do?
Appears you're just moving forward on one total violation, correct?
It, it may be easiest to break it into two, because you've got signage and you've got the roll-up door, they're different things, so that may make it easier for you, if you want to break it up. It's completely up to you how you want to do it.
Okay, thank you. Let's see how the discussion goes.
Okay, thanks. Any more questions? Sorry.
I just want more clarity on the proposal for the security. So, where exactly did you say that they can put the roll-up door, it can still be on the exterior, is that correct?
Well, it would still be, so if you see the photo, or it's also on your screen in front of you, you know, if it was a way to put that big mechanical thing, kind of the metal frame on the interior, so it's a recessed doorway, so kind of inside the building line, we would be okay with that.
Okay.
All right, thanks, Melissa. Would the applicant like to come forward and state your case and your name and address?
Yes. Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, thank you very much. I'm Kelly Frey, I'm an attorney-
I'm Kelly Frey, I'm an attorney with Nelson Mullins. Or sometimes I feel like a priest, in that when my clients come to me, sometimes they ask for permission, sometimes they ask for forgiveness. I'm here today to ask a little bit of both. If we go back to Figure 3, that was in the commission's staff report, you'll see some historical signage that was there before. It was in excess of the current guidelines. So to enforce the guidelines now is also to create a negative covenant, negative easement against that property with respect to signage that did not exist at the time the building was leased or purchased. Also, to have the signage at that level would be consistent with its historic usage, so that's the first part. We'd like to look at, looking at what the historic sign it was at that location, and then conserving that over time with respect to square footage. I don't necessarily want to get down to the per-square-inch calculation, but if you'll notice, the signage that we are looking at, as far as the violation, is all within the frame of the prior signage. That's both on the top of the store and on the side of the store, and the lettering is actually smaller than historically. So what we'd like to do is request that the commission take that into consideration when they're ruling on this violation. We also want to make the point that this is a family-friendly location, it's an international destination spot. It's recognized by Conde Nast, by most of the travel sites, as being one of the top five attractions in Nashville. So we're not looking at necessarily anything other than a family-friendly entertainment center that we want to make sure that we advertise and that we promote as a community, because it's good for the community and good for that location as well. So based upon the current usage, what we'd like to do is work with the commission to make sure that, as long as we're in, within the frame of those signs, that you allow us to continue to make use of that signage for the purpose of advertising. We can also look at the projection signage and work with the commission on that. You know, we tried to, to look at the commission, I came in late on this particular matter, and, and we're trying to, to work with them. We've already agreed to remove the temporary signage, we've already agreed to remove the shingle sign. So we're trying to look for a compromise position, but one that promotes the business of the tenant that's there now, and encourages the type of visitation that we want along this area as well. So I'm going to request that the commission consider this when they look at the potential action that they're going to be taking. If we could, if we could actually defer it until February, it might be helpful as well, because part of this has to do with exposed lighting that's going to be covered under the revisions through the Broadway overlay. So that might be an opportunity for us to work with the commission. If this commission could give us some direction and the staff in regard to conserving the amount of square footage that we have with respect to the historical signage that was there at that location to begin with.
Before you sit down, so are you, are you requesting a deferral? Is, I don't know, can we defer a violation, or?
It's been going on for years. It may be a good idea to get it. Do you want to weigh in?
I believe because it is a violation, it's something that should be, go ahead and be voted on.
Okay.
If something happens that now makes what they're requesting in compliance, that will be taken in consideration at that point, but it shouldn't affect your decision today as to whether you think this properly, this date certain was in violation.
Okay, all right, thank you.
The staff might want to look at, at direction from the commission with respect to whether to consider the historic signage. We've actually spoken with the staff about that, but again, outside of some commission direction, you know, they're not willing to do anything other than enforce the maximum as it exists now, not the historic signage that was at that location before.
Okay, thank you. We deserve a right for a rebuttal after open public hearing. Well, any, any questions to the applicant? Okay, open public hearing, would anyone like to speak regarding this project? Yes, please come forward and state your name and address.
Thank you, Commissioners. My name is Brian Taylor. I live at 5317 Overton Road. I'm here to speak, maybe to add something, but to speak in favor of our request in, in knowing the owner of these two locations, a couple of quick words. I think it would be appropriate if we asked for a deferral of the new sign, the Patsy Cline sign, and maybe until we can get some resolution on the other signs. I would refer to some comments that Councilmember O'Connell and Mr. Stewart said, that downtown floor Broadway and the contiguous areas are very, very different today than when the current sign ordinance was written seven and a half years ago, because I, along with Mr. Mosley and other members of the staff and community, spent a year and a half rewriting the downtown sign code, which was quite an experience, but a good one. In today's time, it's very, very different. The pedestrian-level experiences that some of us have spoken of earlier is certainly different. I would like to say it's not a honky-tonk, it is a destination. Cline and Cash are internationally known, and with, with that regard, Johnny Cash is one of the most worldly figures that has ever graced the music stage. There are two businesses in this building, and if you, if you look at the old sign that you're looking at right now, it is a sign that was there, it had been there for a while, and the only thing the applicant did was resurface that with new letters. It stays in the same frame, the same background is there, it, the box itself didn't change. I would refer to you to the Paradise Park sign on Broadway, that's a very large sign. The only thing that changed from that historic sign was the frame. So I would ask for, in this case, to overlook the fact that the painted area on the front was added, but happily, I think the client would, or applicant would defer the Patsy Cline sign if that was approved.
Thank you very much. Anyone else like to speak regarding this project? State your name and address.
Hi, Kayla Jost, Jostlin &amp; Sons Sign Company, 630 Murfreesboro Pike, Nashville, Tennessee, So as Jostlin signed, we've just come in now on the Patsy Cline sign, and we've not had, had much else to do with the building until now, so my knowledge is slightly limited. I'm so sorry I sound like this, my apologies. I would, as the official applicant, would like to ask that you all, if you do not want to go ahead and move forward with an approval for the existing Patsy Cline sign, and I understand with the violations, you probably will want to defer that. If we could defer that to the meeting where the incandescent lighting will be approved, I think that only makes sense, because in February, that's actually, actually like one of the only things that's not been real controversial about. A lot of the new guidelines that have been proposed is that the incandescent lighting would be allowed. So I would ask that that does be deferred until February, that's all.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, would the applicant like to make one more statement as rebuttal?
I'd just like to go back and say, we'd like to cooperate with the staff. The staff needs some direction. We'd like for the commission to approve the historical square footage that we choose for signage, and with that direction, go back with the staff and look for a compromise.
Okay, thank you. Okay, closed public hearing, discussion.
Just a clarity on what we're approving and recommending here. So Quan, you were saying if we did the question of whether we approve everything as one, or do we do now if they're asking for a deferral on number one? How are we proceeding with this all-in-one?
I believe the, the Patsy Cline sign, the one that will have the exposed or the bare-bub lighting, if that is a part of the application, I don't believe that sign is up yet. Okay, so if the sign is not up yet, that portion of it can be deferred, I believe that will be covered in the Broadway design guidelines. But the things that are up on the building today, I'm assuming right now, if you find those things in violation, you should vote on them and move forward, or if you don't think that they're in violation, vote as such as well.
Thank you. So, so if we're splitting it up, then we're maybe looking for if we want to defer the Patsy Cline sign until after the meeting, and then we vote on the violation, we discussed the violation today. Did you have something, Robin?
Yeah, just one thing to keep in mind is that the two are kind of tied together, because the allotment is based on the building. And so you kind of don't know what to allow for the painted signage if you're not taking into account the projecting sign, because it's just one allotment, it's not per sign or per business, it's per the building. So that makes it a little harder to figure out, and I did want to just clarify that the painted signage is not historic signage. So this is similar to a project you looked at, I believe it was just last month, that Melissa mentioned, where there was painted signage that was there, but it wasn't historic, and they had to remove it or pull it down to meet the allotment. So Paradise Park was a historic sign, so it was allowed to be kept, but this is not.
And Robin and Quan can correct me if I'm wrong, but should you go forward with staff recommendation today, and in two months, in February, exposed bulbs are allowed, that's a change that we could accept at staff level, we'd have to go back to the commission, so it wouldn't, it wouldn't delay that sign any further.
Thanks for that, that's good to know. Okay, so for now then, we're, we're going to think of it still as one, one big thing.
Robin, with, I've got a question, maybe Legal can weigh in, is I specifically wanted to address what sort of this total allotment and how, what the options are to the applicant for compliance, if you will. Whether the signs are viewed as this painted signage, an allotment of painted signage that was on the building before the new signage guidelines were in place, if that, could that be viewed as a taking if it weren't permitted to remain? Some of it's already been removed or cleaned, the signage over, at the first level has been removed. What, what is the staff, and I guess what's Legal's opinion about that in terms of a quantity of signage, if it were in excess of the allotment?
Are you asking, are you saying, is it a taking, or, I guess I want to make-
In other words, if it were already there and they changed it to make it particular to their business, do they have right, I guess, in, in that regard? I'm not asking us to come to a decision that a judge some, at some future point might, might argue, but I, I'll, in some of the discussion, I think tying this back to what a total allotment is, and what, at least as they're currently written, the signage guidelines anticipated or tried to anticipate, I want to be clear. We all have to make choices, and this applicant has to make choices as well.
Right, I won't, because I don't have all the, the law in front of me, I won't make an analysis of if it's a taking, but to the extent that you rule whether, I know Robin has said that it, she does not believe it's a historic sign, that would be staff's opinion. The commission, it's free to make their own determination of if they believe when that sign went up on whatever that date is, if they find that that is historic, and you can have that weighed in your analysis. I believe it's their recommendation that it should not be considered historic, but that's an interpretation that you all would be free to make, or disagree with, with staff's recommendation. So if you do make the decision, or you do believe that it is a historic sign, you can give consideration to that within the total allotment that they would be receiving.
And I'll add to that, on page 51, the guidelines say a sign shall be brought into compliance with the provisions of these design guidelines.
Just one more clarity as well. The larger, the Johnny Cash Museum sign, that, was that a violation that you had, that staff had, had requested the applicant to remedy? At what time? Was that 2015, 2016? What was the prior violation on that? And that was not remedied within that request?
The, the sign was installed in 2013, and it was in 2015 where the commission voted to approve the Johnny Cash sign with the condition that the painted band sign be reduced in size.
Okay.
So it's been up since 2013, the commission's decision was in 2015.
To 2015. So then from 2015 to now, 2017, what has happened is that all these other signs have been added, which has now convoluted a bit the violation.
Yeah, I mean, one of the, so the original approval was assuming that there was just going to be the Johnny Cash projecting sign, now they're applying for a, the Patsy Cline projecting sign, so it's further reducing the size of, it's further reducing the allotment for the paintings, painted signs.
So our priority is to get this preservation permit and the violation cleared up? That, that's our charge? Okay.
That, that's part of your charge, but there's also a request for new signage.
So for further discussion, when, as was stated some seven and a half years ago, a signage, comprehensive signage guideline that hopefully would clear up differences between existing historic design guidelines, guidelines which had its own signage regulations, MDHA, and the downtown code, those needed to be coherent and operate together, and so lots of people got together and we came up with signage guidelines, which then became and were approved as part of our guidelines. And one of the things we tried to anticipate is a multi-tenant building, or a building that had some signage that had vacant space or unused floors. If a tenant, you know, if, if a building owner, whoever was making the decisions about signage, came and used up the allotment, and then, oh, now I've got another tenant and another tenant, I, when, when does that sort of scenario or situation end? And, and so, whether we got it right, I don't know, but certainly it was considered, and an allotment is just that, it's an allotment, and my, if you accept the argument that the signage was existing and somehow has some relevance, the painted signage, you don't get to take that and then go even further beyond the allotment, so the applicant needs to make some choices as to which signs are important. A painted wall sign doesn't necessarily attract people from Broadway, and I don't know that it was this applicant, but other applicants have argued that, to get signs sort of further proud of a building, or any, any other number of reasons to get more signage. And so I think in the arms race of signage, this certainly is the case where a guideline is, is set up for a reason, and if there is some argument to go beyond that, I think it's, it's the applicant's duty to at least make effort to try to comply. Not that they're not with this, but certainly, given the condition that we placed on 2015, to then go and allow more and further out of, of compliance seems specious in my mind.
Thank you.
That's where I was going with that. Just a bit of mechanics here. Hearing the applicant saying they would defer the number one on the recommendation, so if they decided, because we, our charge is to be within the allotment, at the 125 square foot, you know, allotment, that would, and they would say, yep, we're going to follow the, all the recommendations, and that would be really their decision, like you said, Ben, is to, it's their, you know, responsibility to follow within the guidelines. They remove that, would they have to apply for another applicant, application? Because if some of this, two, three, and four, whatever, the, the balance of that less, the Patsy Cline, is within the 125, does that make sense?
I think so. So, you know, if, if they were to come up with a plan where the total square footage, it's 158 is the numbers, where all the signage was no more than 158 square feet, that would be something that staff could accept at staff level. You know, we could, if it's always that met all the other design guidelines and staff found it, met the design guidelines, we could issue staff permits for those. If there was any sort of, if staff felt that it exceeded what was, what the design guidelines allow, then it would have to come back to you, the commissioners, for the determination. So, is that, did I answer your question?
Yeah, somewhat. I'm just thinking, you know, again, yeah, just continue to deliberate here.
So I have one other legal question. So one of the things the applicant asked about was, they said that we'd be creating a negative covenant or easement against this building by requiring the removal of the painted sign. Is that, from a legal standpoint, do you have a feel for that?
I don't, but again, you know, your charge is to determine if it's a violation, and I don't think I could have said it any better than what Ben did. So determining whether they're in allotment, those kind of things, you know, this, this board is, or excuse me, this commission is not tasked with deciding that. Your powers and duties relate to this property as it relates to the design guidelines.
Okay, with that said.
Can I, I have one point of clarification or question for the staff, and it's going to put you on the spot. to put you on the spot. And this picture is a good one to ask the question. It was stated that the staff considers the little sliver as you turn around the corner, I won't use the word side because that's a front. If a sign were painted on the next building down on the side facade, would it have the entire facade width for a, it's not a frontage sign, but could more signage be placed in that location?
I'll grab this one. They could do 125 square feet of painted signage because it's an upper level, but this building's already used that allotment.
So on any, any non-front facade, there is that allotment, and if they've used it on the back, they can't use it in this location? Good. It's in the weeds a little bit, but I wanted to go ahead and answer that question. The applicant was looking for some guidance and wanted to provide them with as cohesive and coherent a bit of guidance as possible.
Okay, you want to make a motion?
So I'll move for disapproval of the application at 119 Third Avenue South, finding that the building in total is in violation of the signage guidelines and further would sort of help resolve this for the applicant. Request the applicant come with a total signage package with calculations for the staff for any wall painted signage and any projecting or other signage permitted by the guidelines for the February app, you know, for the February meeting, assuming that that will sort of resolve the exposed bulb signage. I'll leave that to the applicant, but that they'll have no more than 90 days to remedy the violation.
I'm on a second, but 90 days, where did you get that, Ben?
If we find them in violation and they can't get the other sign, if they really want that sign, they're going to need the approval of the design guidelines to come up with a plan. This violation's been there for two years. I don't think 90 more days is going to hurt us. It allows them enough time to bring together a full package, a full design that accounts for the rear signage, the little side signage and the front signage, come up with something in total to get what they need that's in compliance with the signage guidelines.
Which, on the staff recommendation, it said to remove the violation by January 30th, so you are?
I'm extending that at the applicant's benefit to sort of resolve all these issues.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Does everybody understand it? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion carries. So the next one.
Can I ask for clarification? I believe that motion was based on signage.
It was.
And do we still need to vote on the roll-up door?
Well, I, okay, you're right. And that was the only thing, because I know you actually did approval of the other sign, but you know, did the violation, but we're going as one package. Can I get a motion about the roll-up door then?
I'll make that motion. That's under staff recommends disapproval of the roll-up door, finding that it does not meet section 2B of the design guidelines for rehabilitation of doors and entryways.
Okay, have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion carries. So now we are 400 Broadway.
So 400 Broadway is a circa 1870 brick commercial structure that contributes to the Broadway Historic Preservation Zoning Overlay. A rooftop and rear addition have been approved by MHCC, and those are largely finished, I think, not quite yet open, but largely finished. The MHCC staff has issued several permits for signage, but what's before you today is an application to paint a sign slash mural on the rear addition. And again, the rear addition was approved by the commission, I think in 2015, maybe 2016. The mural will be approximately 22 feet wide by 51 feet tall, or 1,122 square feet. The design guidelines state that, quote, "Generally, a painted sign should not be more than 125 square feet in size." The area where the new painted sign is proposed is approximately, again, 22 feet by 51 feet, or 1,122 square feet. The sign slash painted mural is significantly larger than the building's allotment of 125 square feet for mural. The 120 square feet of mural space is allotted for the entire building. The applicant has a preservation permit for another mural on the Fourth Avenue North facade of the building, but it's staff's understanding that they are not going to move forward with that permit and are instead looking to install a mural on the rear facade. I don't know if I actually have a good photo, I guess you can see it here. So there's a, there is a vacant lot or a parking lot directly behind the rear facade, so it is visible from Fourth Avenue North. So staff is recommending the disapproval of the proposed mural, finding that the signage's square footage to be larger than the 125 square feet allotted in the design guidelines for painted signs for the entire building. Staff finds that the proposed sign does not meet section four of the design guidelines. And just a little bit of clarification, so if the applicant were to return to staff with a design that was 125 square feet or less in the same location, staff could accept that at staff level, it wouldn't have to go back to the commission. So, you know, we could have recommended approval with that condition, but it's kind of one of the same thing.
Okay, thank you very much. With the, any questions for Melissa? Okay, thanks. Would the applicant like to come forward and state your name and address?
My name's Charles Robert Bone. I'm here on behalf of the applicant Riot Hospitality. My address is 1123 Nicolane, Nashville, Tennessee, 37205. I would like to say thank you to Melissa and Robin. They've been very helpful throughout this process, from start to finish, both with the additions, the other signage. This is a prominent spot on Broadway and has been a pretty complicated project, so certainly we appreciate, we appreciate what they've done and what the entire staff has done. The only issue, she is correct, they abandoned the side mural in favor of traditional signage. So the only issue at this point is the rear art mural that you see there. It's our position that this actually isn't a sign. In order for it to be a sign or a painted sign, according to the guidelines, it must be painted on masonry. As you see there, that is not masonry, and it would be our position that the guidelines do not apply to that. Actually, the texture there on the addition, and I would make one point, behind that addition was the original grune signage that was the exact same size as has been proposed here. But actually, here is not masonry. It's text stone, which does not meet the definition of a masonry unit. According to the International Building Code, masonry must be a structural unit. This is a dry powder mixed with water. It's not considered a masonry unit or a mortar product. It's a dry powder that creates a stucco or plaster texture that I think is clear from the depiction on the left. It's installed by mixing powder and water together over drywall or another substance. So pursuant both to the International Building Code as well as the American Society for Testing Material Standards, text stone finish does not meet the definition of a masonry product. If it did, we do think that signage, given what's been considered in totality, should be considered as a modification based on the criteria that you regularly look at. As you know well, those criteria are typically fivefold. It should only be added to a rear elevation, number one. Number two, it cannot be painted on a main facade or the first level of buildings. Number three, obviously, is the, is the size issue where a painted sign should not be more than 125 square feet in size. Four, the painted signs should serve as a sign for the current occupant. Here they certainly do. Should not advertise off-site businesses or products, which they don't, and should not have lighting. So the mural as proposed, even if it was a sign, would be in an alley parking area on the back of the building. It would not be on the main facade and would not have lighting. So in conclusion, this was intended to be an exceptional piece of art painted by an accomplished artist of a local musician supporting the Music City brand. It in court, it contains no logos or branding. Since the mural will not be painted on masonry, it's our position that the guidelines do not apply. If they did apply, we think this mural in this context is appropriate for a modification as it will be in the alley parking area, it will not be on any main facade, and it will not have lighting. So the only issue at that point would be the size, which we think would be appropriate given the context of what has been proposed. As a result, we respectfully ask you to approve the proposed mural as depicted, and I would reserve the balance of my time.
Yep.
Mr. Bone?
Yes, ma'am.
How, how is that going to be? Is it a fixed? Is it going to stand alone? How's that gonna, is it, how is it going to be on that property?
When you-
To the building? Is it going to be attached to the building?
It's painted on the building.
Oh, okay.
But it's not masonry. Correct. Ron? I mean, it is a full artwork painted on the building.
It's attached to the building, Ben.
I don't know about attached. It's painted on that surface that's there.
So then it's attached to the building, right? Right.
True. I wasn't trying to give you a trick.
Oh, no, no.
I was just making sure I understood the question.
I wanted to make sure I understood it as well. Yes, I just, because on the picture, it looked like that was a separate-
Like a canvas.
Yeah, like a canvas.
No, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, thanks. Open up public hearing. Would anyone like to speak regarding this project? Okay, seeing none, because there'll be no rebuttal. Open for discussion. Close public hearing, open for discussion.
So the, this is on the addition portion of this building. I think it's kind of the thing that wasn't, in my opinion, this specific instance is just a thing specifically that was not envisioned, you know, to make an addition. You want to separate it from the historic building, therefore, you don't make it masonry. Then later, it's not masonry, let's put a big sign on it. I think that's kind of the, just an unintended consequence of the masonry argument, masonry versus not masonry. I mean, I still see it as a sign, painted sign, and I think the guidelines are very clear on square footage allotments for that, and that's, that's my opinion on it.
If I could just clarify that, there isn't anything in the guidelines that talk about painted signage only being allowed on masonry. There are guidelines for paint on masonry, but in the ordinance, the sign is defined as "any writing, including letter, work, or numerical pictorial representation, including illustration or decoration, emblem, including device, symbol, or trademark, flag, including banner or pennant, inflatable structure, or any other figure of similar character which is a structure or any part thereof, or is attached to, painted on, or in any other manner represented on a building or other structure, and is used to announce direct attention to or advise." So our argument was that this should meet that 125 square foot allotment.
Any more discussion?
Well, it's hard to get around that 125 square foot size.
Commissioner Tibbs, I'd like to make a motion to adopt staff approval to recommend disapproval of the painted sign on the new building on Broadway, the new addition.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in, any more discussion? Did you have any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion carries. 209 South Fifth Street.
Before I start, the commissioner should have in front of you a email from the council member in support of the project. And then I forgot to send around beforehand, but I have a, some comments from the neighborhood association in opposition to the project and in support of the staff's recommendation. Okay, so 209 South Fifth Street is a circa 1868 brick house that contributes to the historic character of the Edgefield Historic Preservation Zoning Overlay. The houses in sight are currently used as an event facility known as Ivy Hall. The applicant is proposing a side addition, and staff is recommending disapproval of the side addition, finding its size does not, in scale, does not meet the design guidelines. This site has been changed many times throughout the last century and a half. Here is an aerial view showing the overall current lot. This is a rough outline of what the original portions of the house were. And I'll go through some of the changes here quickly, just for some background information, which will help you better understand the proposal at hand. Here are some standbourn maps, so you can see that this block of South Fifth Street used to have two to three structures on it, even facing South Fifth Street, and then some additional properties in the rear facing Fatherland Street. The top left picture is a photograph of the house prior to the designation of the overlay. You can see that before the overlay, they, the current, the then owners, different than the current owners, painted, the red brick, a yellow. Next to it on the top right is an image of a one-story structure that the commission approved in 1979, sometime, I think in the early 90s. The, on the bottom photo shows a greenhouse glass addition that was built on top of the existing addition that was not approved by the commission. The applicant is proposing to remove it, and staff is supportive of removing that greenhouse structure. So, so circa 1984, a brick wall with attached outbuildings was constructed around the perimeter of the lot. So you can see that in the photos there, kind of the brick wall goes along South Fifth Street and turns the corner along Fatherland Street as well. So today, the site for 209 South Fifth Street contains several outbuildings and is over 45,000 square feet in size, so it's quite a large lot for the area. So here's the proposed site plan with the addition outlined in red. Even though the addition meets the base zoning setbacks, staff finds that it interrupts the rhythm of spacing along this section of South Fifth Street. As the standbourn map showed, historically, there were two to three houses on this section of South Fifth Street, all oriented towards South Fifth Street. The side ballroom addition transforms the house and the lot into something that they were not historically. Historically, this block had a collection of larger city homes on urban-sized lots. The side ballroom addition prevents the historic rhythm of spacing of houses to be reestablished in the future with infill development. Further, it tries to make the house into a grand estate on an oversized lot, which was not its historic intention. So here's just a footprint that I colored to show the proportions of the house. So the red is the footprint of the house from 1897, likely into the 1970s. The yellow area was added, approved by the commission in the 1970s, and the blue is the size of the addition as proposed. Here is the South Fifth Street elevation. The addition's design is intended to be an extension of the 1970s side addition to the house. However, its long width and large footprint throws off the proportions of the historic house. The side addition would have a total width of 76 square feet, I'm sorry, not square feet, 76 linear feet and four inches, which is almost twice the width of the historic portion of the house. Although the design guidelines do permit side additions on wide lots like this one, staff finds that proposed side addition does not meet the guideline that side addition should be, quote, "narrower than one-half of the historic building width." So looking at the dimensions, which are on the screen, so the addition width is 76 four inches. The historic house is about 46 feet wide, and the existing side addition is about 12 feet. So according to the design guidelines, you know, an appropriate width for a side addition would be about 23 feet, which is much smaller than the 76 square feet, 76 linear feet The design guidelines state that side additions should, quote, "be setback from the face of the historic structure and should be suburban in height, width, and massing to the historic structure." The side addition attaches onto a 1970s side addition, and it matches the one-story height of the previous addition. While the addition is significantly shorter than the historic house, its massive width and footprint render the scale of the addition inappropriate. Staff also finds that the two existing exterior stairs, one on the South Fifth Street facade and one on the Fatherland Street facade, are not appropriate. Historically, stairs were internal, or if they were utilitarian, were located on the rear of a house or addition, so that would be less visible from the street. rear of a house or addition, so that would be less visible from the street. Staff finds that the proposed flat roof does not meet the design guidelines, as the guidelines state that new construction should have a minimum roof slope of 612. Staff finds that the building's shape, which is a long rectangle, does contrast greatly with the historic house's shape. Looking at the window-opening pattern, there is an expanse of approximately 35 feet on the front of the addition facing South Fifth Street without a window or door opening. Staff finds that this expanse does not meet the design guidelines, which state that there should be a door or window opening every eight to 13 feet. On the top is the rear of the building facing the interior of the lot, and on the bottom is the Fatherland Street elevation. And here is an elevation provided by the applicant, showing the addition behind the existing wall. Again, the wall was constructed in the 1980s and is not something that staff considers to be historic. Although the applicant maintains that the addition will not be highly visible from the street because of the brick wall and the landscaping, staff counters that the brick wall was constructed in the 1980s and is therefore not historic. Both the brick wall and the landscaping could be easily removed, and if they were, the addition would be highly visible from both South Fifth Street and Fatherland Street. In the past, the commission has not used fences or walls or landscaping when determining visibility. And I just wanted to kind of add that although it's unusual to have a house on a lot of this site, it is not unique in the Edgefield Historic Preservation Zoning Overlay. There are several examples. I just have two here. One is 809 Russell Street. The map isn't super clear, but it's the house kind of in the middle, and where it says like 2, 5, 7, 9, 10, that's all owned by the same owner. So, there is a possibility if those lots were combined, you know, this would have precedence for this house and for this house here, which is at 714 Russell Street again. There are two vacant properties where it's not, you know, unheard of, or it could be that, you know, if this were approved, there would be other houses seeking similar approvals. So, in conclusion, staff is recommending disapproval, finding that the proposed side addition does not meet Section 2B, specifically sections for additions, heights, scale, and roof form of the Edgefield Historic Preservation Zoning Overlay Design Guidelines.
Okay, thanks. Any questions from Melissa? Okay, thank you. Would the applicant like to come forward and state your name and address?
Chairman, good afternoon. I'm not the applicant. I'm Harold Love Jr., State Representative, District 58. This property is within the district that I represent, and I've seen the plans for the addition, and I've talked to the owners, and I am convinced that what they're planning will not disrupt the community. Also bring a message from Senator Harper. She is in.
One quick question now. Are you saying you are with the applicant, or are you not with the applicant?
I said I'm not the applicant.
But you're speaking on their behalf?
Yes, sir.
Okay, just making sure.
You want me to go after him, or?
No, no, if you're speaking, just your par, they're 10 minutes in? No? Okay, yeah, let them go first, if you don't mind, and then you can speak right after that.
Okay, thank you.
Chairman, members of the commission, my name is Tom White with Tune, Entrick, and White, 315 Dedrick Street. I'll ask at the front end, I've given to Rob and some handouts to be given. One deals with the legal issue here, the other has to do with the actual plan, so I'm asking that those be handed out if they have not already. And initially, make the comment, this is an application for ballroom space, very critically, within the current historic structure. That's the critical thing we need to discuss at the very front end. East Ivy, which is what this property is known at, is an extremely popular legendary special events property located in Nashville, extremely well-respected. So, the front-end issue is, is this within the, quote, "historic" structure at the present time? Now, the staff has made these comments, and I heard them again today. The brick wall was constructed in 1980 and therefore is not historic. Both the brick wall and the landscaping could easily be removed, period, and if so, it would be very visible. It's never going to be removed, and here's why. The events that take place at this facility are within the wall and therefore within the historic structure. If we took the wall down, it would be the death and end of this property, because the current acre size has weddings, it has a number of outdoor events. They're all within the historic structure. To take the wall down would be, would end basically all those activities, so that's never going to happen. But importantly, with respect to the suggestion about whether it's within the historic structure, I was involved in the lawsuit. I'm reading to you the language from Judge Binkley, which was in December of this last year. Quote, he's talking about the Board of Zoning Appeals and the Historic Commission. The Board made the decision that the masonry wall was connected to the home. If it's connected, it's part of the structure. That's what they decided. I can't substitute my judgment for that. That's what they decided the definition of structure meant. So, you've got a judicial declaration as recently as December of last year that the wall is historic. That was important to my client, because the events we had are within the historical structure. Therefore, basically, in my opinion, the guidelines do not apply. That's our initial position. I also want to say, my client has spent hundreds of hours in an attempt to comply with what the guideline requirements might be, so our alternate position is, if you think wrong legally, let them tell you why they do comply with the guidelines. But initially, we're within the historic structure, and therefore the guidelines do not apply. That's the judge's answer. I think it's clear. Metro participated in the case. That's our answer. Thank you. I'd ask for a motion that there's no jurisdiction at the appropriate time.
Hello, my name's Ed Clay. I am the owner of East Ivy Mansion. I'd like to start off by thanking our councilman Brett Withers for his support here. I have a lot of respect for Mr. Withers, especially considering that we had some debate over the last year, and it takes a good man to come on our side on this and do the right thing. I'd like to also thank our State Representative Harold Love for supporting us today. We really appreciate the support of our councilman and state representative. I was born and raised in Nashville, Tennessee, went to John Overton High School, and I'm passionate about Nashville. I love Nashville. Whenever I took over East Ivy Mansion in 2012, it was falling apart. It was falling apart. We now have invested over $3.5 million into East Ivy Mansion. That is our investment. And while there can be debate over the use of the property, they can't debate that we haven't done what we're supposed to do. We have not had one violation in five years, not one violation, and we've worked very hard for that. Some of the neighbors debate the use, and I can respect that, but they actually agree that we have been good neighbors and stuck to our word, and I want you to know that. Whenever we decided to do the ballroom, whenever we decided to design the ballroom, our main focus was staying within the historic guidelines. That was our main focus. This is 100% in the historic guidelines, and our architect and Dave Watel are going to explain that, but it's 100% inside the historic guidelines. Now, I understand that the Metro Historical Commission staff has recommended against us, and I respect their position, but I also say, they haven't spent the time that we have making sure this is within the historical guidelines. We are within it. We spent hundreds of hours on this. We spent hundreds of hours on this, and we are within the historical guidelines, so we ask for your vote today. Thank you.
Hello, good afternoon. My name is Dave Watel, and I'm Ed Clay's partner in East Ivy. Ed is correct. We spent a tremendous amount of time trying to make the design to fit inside the guidelines. I spent a tremendous amount of time going through the guidelines that were online, and as they were written, we fit into them. Basically, on, there has been some debate based on the square footage, that the addition must be smaller than the house. The historic structure is 5,139 square feet. Our proposed addition is 2,600 feet, which is 50% of the house. Now, there's been some discussion about it needs to be smaller than the footprint. The footprint of the historic space is 3,046 feet, of which we are still underneath that by quite a bit, over 400 square feet. The lot size is atypical, okay? The guidelines clearly state that exceptions may be made when unusual constraints make the parameters unreasonable, such as an extreme grade change, atypical lot parcel shape or size. In these cases, an addition may rise above or extend wider than the existing building. So, given that phrase that's inside the guidelines, our existing house has a historic structure of 55 feet wide from facing South Fifth Street. There is a 12-foot addition done in the late 70s. The addition that we're proposing is 75 feet additional in width. It will not be seen from the street. We're looking for balance, and we're looking for rhythm, and Councilman Withers, excuse me, in his letter approving us, or supporting us, he talks about the rhythm and flow on South Fifth Street. We are the only house that faces South Fifth Street. There is no rhythm or flow with any other residential lots, period, or the only one. Our current lot is the largest lot in historic Edgefield, residentially. We are 175 feet by 265 feet. We're over one acre. We are atypical for a number of reasons. We are the largest lot. We have an elevated lot. We are elevated from street level by at the very least eight feet. If you look at the elevations with the wall, in order to see that elevation, the way it's shown and depicted in my elevation drawings, you'd have to be on about an 18-foot ladder to see it in that kind of retrospect. If you're sitting on South Fifth Street, it's tremendously angled, and you won't be able to see very much, if not any, of the structure we're proposing to build. We're, like I said, we're the only lot that has frontage on South Fifth Street. We're the only lot with a privacy wall that surrounds the whole acre, that is almost 10 feet tall. In some areas, it's larger, of which was approved by the Historic Commission back in the 80s. We're the only lot with an adjacent residential lots facing the same direction. We are atypical. There is no debate about it. So, given that, we fall inside the guidelines that we can be wider than the historic home, we've put a lot of consideration into making the addition subservient to the historic structure. We want the historic structure to remain the pinnacle of this property. We have no desire to display the addition at all. It is a matter of form and function. It eliminates certain issues that have been concerns, excuse me, concerns in the past about sound, of which we have not breached, not once, but it gives Ed and I some peace to have a space such as this that will eliminate some of the sound potential issues. There's been a tremendous amount of effort to try to draw this inside the guidelines. Now, these are not laws, they're not codes, they're guidelines. We feel, and our council, and feel that we fit inside of it without a doubt. We are allowed to build an addition within two feet of the highest point. The highest point's 44 feet. We're taking the existing structure from 28 feet down to 14 feet. We could go up an additional 20-something feet. That's not what we're doing. We're removing the glass atrium, and that is a benefit to historic. It doesn't belong. So, we're taking that away. We're lowering the structure, making it subservient, and we're building a structure that adds value to the community. East Ivy Mansion, excuse me, introduce Tom Anderson, my architect here. He can attest to the square footages that I just quoted, because he helped me draw the plans.
Okay, I'm Tom Anderson, 303 South Main Street, Goodlettsville, Tennessee, 37072. And yes, we put together this design counting on the leniency given, or the sizes available to us by complying with the atypical site. And this site, I mean, we got the proportions that you have. Dave, the width that they had, you told me about a while ago, that was a little bit incorrect. Which one was that?
The width of the existing, excuse me, of the historic structure is actually 55 feet, not 46 feet. I think that when you're looking at balance, and I've only got 20 seconds here, currently we're at one acre, and the historic structure is only crammed into the northwest corner of the entire acre. There is no balance. It's 150-foot deep and all crammed in the northwest corner. We're looking to extend the front facade to add architectural balance to the property so that it actually fits, versus it being on one side, on one corner alone.
And we're actually one and one-third acre, slightly over one and one-third acre.
Okay, thank you very much. There was a lot there. Any questions for the applicant for open public hearing? Okay, thank you. Open pu, oh, I'm, someone? You go ahead.
The state rep, I don't think finished his two minutes.
Mr. Love, if you want to come next, says I was.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I had a long speech prepared, but I think they summed it up.
Probably don't mind if you want to do it again.
I'm sorry. I do want to add also that Senator Harper has sent me an email that she is also supporting the project, but she is in a finance meeting in the Capitol and could not make it, so I just want to add that sentiment to it also. So, thank you for your support, and I would hope that she would consider the application. Thank you.
Okay, open public hearing. Anyone like to speak regarding this project? Please come forward and state your name and address.
Good afternoon. My name is Dedrick Perry, 2615 Abion Street, 37208. I've been a resident of Nashville, Tennessee since 1999. I consider myself a Nashvillian. Despite not being born here, I eat hot chicken. I've even done country karaoke. Since then, since I've arrived here, I've owned a business in the city. I've canvassed with my neighbors in District 21. In almost every local election, I volunteered at this city's finest institutions of giving, and I've raised tens of thousands of dollars for charity, many of which were done right at East Ivy Mansion. This property has been, for the past several years, since Mr. Clay has taken the property over, one of, not only the most beautiful wedding venues, but probably one of the most prominent fundraising venues in the city. We would ask that, as you decide to approve the plan for the expansion of the ballroom, that you take this into consideration. For those of us that do decide to give, this also facilitates more giving so that we're not just limited to outdoor spaces. Also, for those families that choose to share their special day, their wedding, with the citizens of Nashville, and the economic impact that that has, this also facilitates them even better. I have several friends and families that have made their decision to move to Nashville based on weddings that they have had, or their friends have had, in the city. East Ivy is one of the most popular wedding venues. The expansion of this ballroom, again, further facilitates new movers into the city and their economic impact. I'll close. The ballroom will make East Ivy more viable and accessible to generous patrons who give to our charities, as well as families who want to share their special day with us. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Randy Lesnick. I'm the CEO of Randy Events, 1601 Seventeenth Avenue in Nashville, Tennessee. I too consider myself a Nashvillian. I've been here for 23 years. As an event planner, I'm here to speak on behalf of the events at East Ivy. It is one of the most beautiful places to have a wedding. It's absolutely beautiful, but there is no backup. There is no backup except a tent, and a lot of people, because of the cost of a tent or erecting a tent, they choose not to do East Ivy, or the months are limited, because you could only do, say, maybe from April to October, the beginning of October. We were zoned to do 125 events there, but we could only do maybe 60. We've averaged 60 over the last three years. But because there's no backup, it's very hard to expand the season. By having this ballroom, we could do meetings, we could do corporate events, we could do backups to weddings, we could do, we could do things all year long. So, it's very important, because the event industry, unfortunately, so much downtown has become honky-tonks, and there are bars, and people don't necessarily get married there. A lot of the event space has been taken up by these bars. So, East Ivy is crucial. It's crucial. So, we really ask that you approve this recommendation for the expansion of this ballroom.
My name is Bill Kaiser. I'm with Music City Tents and Events. I've been a senior account manager with them for three and a half years.
Could you state your address, too?
I'm sorry. Your name and address, thanks. My home address or the company address? 5901 California Avenue, Nashville, Tennessee, 37209. I've been, as mentioned, a senior account manager for Music City Tents for three and a half years. All of those three and a half years, I've worked directly with Ed Clay and overseen almost every event that they've had there. And as my colleague Randy mentioned, there are a huge number of events that we miss out on and are really altered drastically because of the non-rain plan. I mean, we do have a rain plan, but we have to incorporate a ton of tents. So, on the bride's most important day of their life, they have to recant and come back and say, "We can't do anything outside because of the rain." If we were able to bring this installation in and just maximize the space that they have available there, that would really save the day for an untold amount of brides that have come to me crying and saying, "What are we going to do? This is supposed to be the most important day of my life, and it's going to rain." So, if you guys would just please take that into consideration. I know that Ed has the utmost respect for the history of the area. He loves the facility. He doesn't want to do any denture in any way to it. He just wants to make it easier and more accessible for the people that are going to use it for a long time to come. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Chris Jackson, 4532 Alcott Drive. I've had the pleasure of working with Mr. Watel and Mr. Clay since they opened up East Ivy, and I've watched it go from needing a lot of work to being a well-oiled machine. I'm completely for this, because I think that East Ivy has raised awareness for the whole area. It's brought people to the area that have never been to the area, and then brought people back to the area. people back to the area to, for local restaurants and things like that, or whatever. Now, the premise of what they've said with the rain plans and things like this, what this addition would do for my company—I own a company called Nashville Audiovisual. We do production and rentals and lighting and things like that. This would give that area an opportunity to have events all week long, not just Saturday. It would also give this space an opportunity to cut down on some of the complaints that I've heard in the past, such as not as many vehicles or whatever else, because there wouldn't be tents and everything like that. So, not only that, a lot of my employees work at this venue, and it's been great for them. A lot of my employees live on this side of town, so they're pumping that money back into the economy over there. And I just think this addition would be very, very good. It looks aesthetically like it would be right on point for the area, and I think you would see the amount of business and the smoothness of each event be flawless and a very smooth transition. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Jim Haye. I'm owner of Chef's Market Catering, which is at nine hundred Conference Drive in Goodlettsville. We've been in the catering business for over twenty years, and I have to say, long before Ed owned East Ivy, I drove by East Ivy—I'm not sure it was named that then—and admired what a wonderful building it was, and I thought, "What a great place for people to have weddings and to have great life experiences." Having been there, I will say that Ed and the management of that are, as a vendor, are always very strict and have us adhere to all of the rules, or they do a great job with that. I will say that having an indoor space, or a space that isn't dependent upon a tent, would be a great addition to the space. I think the folks that were having events there, they have a great time, but I will say the rain is somewhat problematic. We've done galas. We've done weddings, and it can be an issue. You see people having great life experiences there, and you see a lot of people, as Chris just said, that come into town, that are visiting. I think it helps give East Ivy an identity. I will say that, I've watched, as I've worked with several venues, probably fifty different venues around town, and this is one of the most beautiful ones that's out there, but I've seen them all gradually add indoor spaces. Even Bellmead has now got like a permanent space in the back of that. I think this would be a great addition for East Nashville and East Ivy.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Adam Dred, seventeen oh nine Nineteenth Avenue, South Nashville, Tennessee. I have known Dave Watel, actually, since the eighties, when I managed Phazen's Restaurant, which is two doors away from my current office. I come here today in my capacity, actually, as a former councilman-at-large, and I was the first chairman of conventions and tourism. And like Councilman Withers, I'm here to support adding this ballroom to this location. In the big picture of things, they really aren't able to operate at full capacity without an indoor facility addition added to this. And what that does for our city right now, especially with some of our new wonderful plans, including this transportation plan, we have to pay for all that, and we pay for that with hotel taxes, rent-a-car taxes, and revenue coming into our city mainly from our tourists. By having this venue open more days, that rents more hotel rooms, probably over a hundred each time they can be open for something again, and helps out the city in general. The neighbors we've spoken to around there like what they've done with the neighborhood. It's a pretty location. It livens it up. I know the retirees across the street really enjoy them being there. They're good neighbors, good citizens, and they're generating a lot of revenue for this city in a smart way. And I'm here to ask for your support of allowing them to build their ballroom. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Lois Lane. I live at eight seventeen Russell Street in Historic Edgefield, the neighborhood where East Ivy is. And I am currently the president of the Board of Directors for Historic Edgefield Neighbors, which is our neighborhood association. We have a very modest budget in our association, so we're not able to hire attorneys and architects to represent us, to represent our position. But our goal as a neighborhood organization is to try to preserve the residential and historic quality of our neighborhood. We have a beautiful neighborhood that's been saved in many instances by the guidelines, the historic preservation guidelines, and we hope that you will uphold those guidelines today. And the reason that the board voted to support the staff recommendations for disapproval of at least the current proposal for this project is that it does not—is not consistent with those guidelines. Some of the comments that have been made by board members is that this would be a huge structure along South Fifth Street. And also, we have not addressed whatever this is on the top, which I assume is a large deck that the parties would move to. And I'm not sure what the impact is going to be for that on the perceived height of the facility, for the numbers of people they can have, they can host at their events, with the cars and the traffic that come along with it, or the noise, once you get people up on those top balconies or the top deck. I know that Brett Withers was in support of an enclosure on the property because of the noise issues, and he felt that enclosure, which other historic home event venues have added, would help to solve the noise problem. So, I think Brett had hoped that this would be a solution to the noise issues in the neighborhood from the music from the weddings. Things have been peaceful in the neighborhood. The lawsuit was resolved, and neighbors have either moved away because they didn't like the noise, or they've learned to live with the frequent music from the weddings. So, we've had peaceful relations, I guess you would say, with East Ivy in recent years, but we're not—we're very uneasy about what this expansion of the business would mean for the noise and other issues. This is—I think the crux of the matter is, this is a commercial operation that is operating in a residential neighborhood, and the preservation guidelines are geared for a residential neighborhood, and their needs as a business are often at variance with what the neighborhood needs. In regard to the time perspective, I believe Mr. White said that people would not be taking down the wall and that the foliage in the wall would not be an issue. Removal of the foliage in the wall would not be an issue, but if you live in our neighborhood, your time perspective is a little different, because we live in houses that are over a hundred years old. And if you think, you know, fifty years from now, we're hoping that a lot of our beautiful historic homes will still be there, and—but the wall and the trees may not be. So, we need to—I hope that you will make the decision today based on what's good for a residential historic neighborhood, not a business that happens to operate in one. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm James Tomato. I live at eight hundred Boscoble Street in Historic Edgefield. I've prepared a lot that talks specifically about what this application is supposed to be, which is application for an addition to a residential home. And now I'm following caterers and promoters talking about the value of this business. It's very difficult to talk about the proper context for what we're supposed to be doing with the Metro Historic Zoning Commission. Should we be allowing an addition for residents? This creaky old ordinance, the historic home events ordinance, has allowed the resident to straddle residential and commercial. So, we're talking about not an addition. We're talking about business expansion. How can we get more people? How can—we've heard people say, "We can get more events. We can get more people in events. We can work year-round." That goes against what we thought we were getting with the historic home events ordinance. But I will touch on what has been recommended by the staff. I support their recommendation. We are looking at, if you don't believe Tom White, that you can build anything within this wall because you've established an historic zone, then we're looking at a massive expansion that extends their front fascia by what almost a hundred and fifty percent, talking about a roofline that doesn't suit the historic property with a party deck on top. I would hope that the—and again, there's a mitigating argument about the wall and the trees blocking any nonhistoric elements of this new addition, but trees can be taken down. You know, this is a backdoor in.
Thank you very much.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you.
My name is W.B. Baker, Jr. I reside at five twenty-six Fallen Street. I've been a resident of East Nashville for over sixty-six years, ever since Cumberhill froze over nineteen fifty-one. But anyway, though, I've walked past this location for sixty-six years. I watched it grow from a little small place to a mansion. They hold beautiful weddings, receptions, and not only that, they maintain a beautiful property. And since I've been there, me and my wife, we really enjoy the weddings and the Rolls-Royces and the horse-drawn carriages and all the extras to go along with it. But anyway, though, I've got to know Mr. Ed here, Clay, and Mr. Watel. They're beautiful guys, good people. They maintain people control. They maintain their property, and it's a good addition to East Nashville, and I enjoy every minute of it. And for the ballroom, I'm all for it. Bring it on. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to speak regarding this project? Okay. Although you guys use your ten minutes, I will give you thirty seconds if you want to do a rebuttal, but just—it'll be a hard thirty seconds, or a strict thirty seconds, maybe a better way to say it.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. First, we want to make it clear that although our legal position is that the judge has made a declaration that the—we're actually withinside the structure within the walls. I think that's absolutely clear. No matter what any of us think here, that's a judicial declaration. Secondly, we're willing to discuss further with the staff on the guidelines. If it's removal of the stairs, removal of some conception of what's there on the top, we're willing to do that and address it with the staff. We've appreciated their time, but there's absolutely no question, in my opinion, that the wall itself is a historic structure. That's a given judicially, and we'd ask for your approval, either to basically say there is no jurisdiction, or see that we meet the guidelines. We certainly tried to. Thank you for your courtesy.
Thanks, Tom. Okay. Closed public hearing. Discussion.
I'll—just before the discussion begins, I believe that the case that has been referenced is a case that was an appeal by the neighbors as it related to the activities, the weddings and such, that they were having on the property, and whether that would be allowed, or whether it had to be inside the historic home. And any finding as it relates to that wall was done by the Board of Zoning Appeals, BZA, and that certainly—that finding is not binding upon this commission where we sit today. So, what we have to decide today is whether this project fits inside the design guidelines.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification. Okay. Discussion. I'll start calling people.
I'll say, if for some reason Judge Binkley's determination that this is a structure is upheld, I would argue that this then is an addition, because you can see it up over the top of the structure. And so, I'm not a judge, and that may not mean anything, but certainly this is visible, and it is added to. I think with that being said, I don't have—you know, the use issue is not something that this board has really much—has any sale, and that's in a separate jurisdiction. I think because this building, as the application presents, is what it is, certainly an addition of this length that is uninterrupted in the front facade. If you look at both the facades of the existing house and moving up the side street, the side has plenty of ins and outs, and the rhythm, openings, spacing, this addition does not comply with that and is, you know, just a full-on straight-run facade that may not—in this current orientation, may not fit well with how a ballroom needs to lay out. That's not why we're here. The activities that go on inside is not what we're about. Further, you know, how the—I feel like I understand as an architect the reason that some of those openings are not present is the number of occupants that can be on the roof have to be able to get down if there's a fire inside, and so it's a bit ham-handed, in my opinion, architecturally, the way that the stairs come down on two very prominent facades that prohibit windows, or at least as drawn, windows from occurring at those locations. And so, certainly, if this were to move forward, I think those things specifically need to be addressed in terms of its fitting into the guidelines. Rhythm and spacing on the railings, many of those things are—seem not to be in compliance.
Well, I applaud the owners of this structure for really looking like it really—you all really did a great job of renovating this historic structure, and it is probably a jewel in the neighborhood. I can't help but think that this is an addition and that it's not in compliance with the guidelines. And as Commissioner Mosley said, our venue is not to—as far as use is concerned, it's just the historic integrity of the building, which y'all have done a fabulous job of redoing. But I'm having a problem with the addition, so.
Okay.
I mean, I agree with what Commissioners Mosley and Mahal have said, and in that—in that regard, you know, I'm—I move to make a motion to adopt staff guidelines for disapproval for this project at two oh nine South Fifth Street.
Okay. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any more discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I address the commission and ask the consideration that we've talked with the staff at some length. We really have spent the amount of time we've suggested. We would, at our own expense, ask that it be deferred to the next meeting. We'll continue to try to work with the staff to address some of the comments we heard here today, but we respectfully ask that, in light of the time and effort that we've spent. It's the commission's call, but we'd appreciate that courtesy.
Okay. Legal?
He's asking for a deferral, which I believe Mr. White is asking for a deferral. There hasn't been a vote taken, so the project can't be deferred.
I send the kicker. Okay. Okay. So, do you want to say something, Ron?
Yeah, if you don't mind. What I heard were—if it's going to be deferred, I think, you know, all the feedback that we can give the applicant would be the best thing. And I haven't heard anything about the location of the addition, and maybe we could give them some feedback on that. The guidelines do say that generally, an addition should be situated at the rear of a building in a way that will minimize the visual impact upon both public facades.
I think as a—I'll comment just from an opinion. If you take the staff's analysis and even some of the Sanborn maps, I don't feel like an addition would necessarily have to be at the rear or site planned in a different way, but certainly its orientation, as this locomotive sort of stuck on the side of the building, doesn't lend itself to an argument that it would have a rhythm of two structures sort of with a gap in the middle that wouldn't necessarily— sort of with a gap in the middle that wouldn't necessarily, in my mind, mean that they have to be separated or not undercover to travel from one to the other. Because, I mean, it is an event venue, and they certainly want to have, I would imagine that that would be desirable for the end outcome. I would, I would think that if that argument is going to be, I think that argument carries some weight in terms of what would be appropriate as an addition, is that if it had the appearance of, more of an appearance of two separate things instead of one thing that was just sort of endless out the side, that as a site planning exercise, wouldn't necessarily be outside the guidelines, in my opinion.
I think from my standpoint as well, I do, I do think the height is appropriate. I like it that it's not a tall structure like was, was brought out. I agree with Commissioner Mosley about the unfortunate impact of the elevations of the stairs on the elevation, so that they prohibit windows and really a spacing of that. It's a pretty stark facade to that. The other thing that I could see, and it's probably not within our purview, but I could see a tent on top of that, you know, and I think there's plenty of space on this lot for outdoor space. And one of the ways that it does not comply with the guidelines is a roof slope. So, the flat roof is problematic. If you eliminated the flat roof, had a sloped roof, and eliminated the stairs, then I think it opens up some opportunities to do something that may be more in keeping with the guidelines.
Okay. Is that enough for you, Robin? Okay. All right. So, we, we will be deferring then, 209 South Fifth Street. Did we get a length, 30 days? Is that what we said? Okay, 30 days to the next meeting. Okay. Commissioners, we have gone two and a half hours straight. If you don't mind, I'd like to take a quick five-minute break. We are about to start, 1915 Bosco Bell Street.
All right. All right. So, this is a request to construct a detached accessory dwelling unit at 1915 Bosco Bell Street. This one-and-a-half-story house, which is on the property, was built circa 1920 and does contribute to the Lockland Springs East End District. The house is located on a corner lot adjacent to Shelby Park. Lilian Street abuts the property to the rear, but at this location, it functions more as an alley, as there are no homes fronting that street. The dada meets the design guidelines for everything except eve height. So, as proposed, the overall height of the dada is 24, 24 feet, 10 and 1/2 inches, with an eve height of 12 feet, 9 and 1/2 inches, both measured from grade. The design guidelines require that single-story and one-and-a-half-story outbuildings have a maximum eve height of 10 feet or not exceed the eve height of the house, whichever is less. The proposed eve height not only exceeds the maximum eve height of 10 feet, but also exceeds that of the house, which is approximately 10 feet, 9 inches. So, in order to meet the design guidelines, staff recommends that the eve height of the outbuilding be reduced so that it does not exceed the 10 feet. So, here are the, the front and right-side elevations of the proposed dada. The dada will be clad in cement's board siding with what appears to be a board and button as a secondary cladding on the dormers. Here are the left and rear elevations. And here is, and apologize if it doesn't show up very well, here's a view of the proposed dada in relation to the historic house, taking into account grade on site. While the eve height appears subordinate to those of the historic house, the eve height still exceeds that, that maximum of 10 feet per the design guidelines, as well as the eve height of the historic house measured from grade. So, in conclusion, staff recommends approval of the dada with the following conditions: one, that the eve height be reduced to 10 feet; two, that staff approve the pedestrian and vehicular doors, secondary cladding material, and roof color prior to purchase and installation; three, that the HVAC be located on the rear facade or on side facade beyond the midpoint of the dada; four, that new drawings be submitted reflecting that those conditions are met prior to the issuance of the preservation permit; and five, that staff receive a copy of the filed restrictive covenant for the dada prior to issuance of the permit, which is also a requirement of the, the design guidelines as well as the zoning code. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Is there any questions for staff? All right. Thanks. Would the applicant like to come forward? State your name and address.
Hello. I'm Paul Bullifard. The architect on the job. I live at 1222 East Dale Avenue, Nashville, Tennessee, 37216. I appreciate the commission giving me the opportunity to state our position on some leniency on just one of the items that's listed on the staff recommendations, which is the 10-foot reduction, or the 2-1/2-foot reduction on the eve height of the detached structure. As an architect, we try to balance client expectations, building codes, building construction systems, and in the case of this particular project, the historic overlay. I value all of the tenants of the historic overlay, and I try to work within all of those and try to balance that between my client's needs and wants. This particular client approached me needing additional storage space for their home, additional office space for both her and her husband, as their family has expanded from one child to two. They typically work from home. One of the exhibits that wasn't presented was a floor plan of the upper floor. It is divided with two office spaces, a common space in the middle, and a bathroom. I, through many iterations of design, attempted to maximize that upper square footage, which now we're currently at 680 square feet. Maximum square footage for the lot is 700 for livable space. I felt that with the increase of the eve height, that just a modest amount, that we would be able to maximize that 700, get close to that 700 square footage. I have done other iterations that were, were too, that, that met the eve height condition but compromised a considerable amount of square footage, which we're trying to maximize for my client's needs. And so, I felt that it was within reason to ask the commission to consider the, that additional two feet of, or 2-1/2 feet worth of vertical height. Thank you.
Okay. This applicant too, or?
Yep. Oh, sorry. Yeah. So, I am Emmy Brown of 1915 Bosco Bell Street, and I just thank you for, you know, hearing us out today, and I thank you for everything that you do to preserve the historical integrity of our community. I, my husband and I, we moved to Nashville in 2012. We consider ourselves Nashvileans. I eat, I do eat hot chicken. I, I don't sing country karaoke. You wouldn't want to hear me do that. But when we found our house in East Nashville, we loved that it was in a historic neighborhood, and we love that every house looks a little bit different, too. Since we've moved to East Nashville, our, our family has very much changed. When it was just the two of us, our three-bedroom house was okay. You know, it was very livable. But three and a half years ago, we acquired a son, and then 11 weeks ago, we had a baby girl. So, we have lost all of our guest bedrooms. We have lost our home offices. We have acquired lots of kid crap. We have strollers and bikes and ride-on toys and all kinds of things that are shoved into every little corner of our home. So, what we really need is not only a home for our cars, because we have no garage, we need a place for storage, and we need a place where we can work. We primarily work out of our homes, and my bedroom, a little corner of my bedroom, has become my home office. So, I really need a place where we can, we can work, and so, we're trying to have a design that allows us to have two small offices, one for my husband, one for myself, where we can throw an air mattress to actually have a guest bedroom for, for somebody when they come in town. And what, to Melissa's point, one of the things that she pointed out is that the eve's height, it looks, I guess, I don't know what the word she used was, but it looks submersive or less than the, the height of the house. We do care about withholding the historic, historical integrity. We care very much about that, and we also need to create a home that, a structure that works for us. When we give up that little, that two feet of space, it doesn't seem like a lot, but it causes us to lose about 50 square feet in that little apartment, in that little office building, which totally blows up the interior design and causes us to lose, you know, one of those offices where we can really only have one. So, I urge you, and I beg you, to, you know, approve that, that first condition. Everything else, you know, we're absolutely fine with, but it's that eve's height. We, we really need that to get the, the floor plan to work for us. So, I thank you for what you do, and I hope you allow us that opportunity.
Okay. Thank you. Any applicants, any questions for the applicant? Okay. Thank you very much. Open public hearing. Would anyone like to speak regarding this project? Okay. Seeing none, closed public hearing. No need, no need for rebuttal. Open discussion.
Well, I'm sitting here looking at the, the rules about dadas, and it's pretty clear that the, the eve, the maximum eve height is 10 feet for one story. And so, is that what we're looking at here?
Yep.
Yep. And so, I would like to make a motion to adopt the, the staff recommendations.
Okay. We have a motion? Do we have a second?
A second.
Okay. But I will open discussion, because I knew, weren't you about to say something?
Let me just pretty much that.
Okay. Any, anybody else want to make a motion at all? I mean, discussion, I'm sorry.
Sure. I, I do think that this site does have some unique characteristics, given that it's surrounded by Shelby Park trees and no adjacent houses other than on one side, and not ever going to be any other adjacent houses where Shelby Park is. It is lower in height. I agree that, yes, the guidelines state 10 feet. So, if we're going to go strictly by the guidelines, it's 10 feet, but the staff could have approved that based on them conforming if they were able to meet that standard. I've looked at the plans and the architecture. I can understand, I've read the letters and the supporting information, and I can see where they need that additional height there. If the house wasn't higher than the side of the, they do, if it wasn't surrounded by the park, then I would, I would be exactly in conformance. But I see some room for an exception in this case, just based on the unique circumstances of the property.
Okay. Any other discussion? Ben or Manay or?
So, is that, Cyril, you think that just because it's not, you know, the lot isn't adjacent to other homes, so it's, it's just kind of in a unique position in the neighborhood? It's kind of what you're?
I think that's part of it, and part of it, too, is the massing of the, of the main house. So, it's a larger, I don't think anybody could be confused that it's not subservient to the main house. So, I think the intent is to keep it subservient, and so, I think it, although it doesn't meet the letter of the law, it meets the intent.
Okay. Any more discussion? Look, if you're looking a little bit there.
I was asking how I feel about it, so I might as well speak up. On, on the one hand, I can empathize with the applicant. You know, it's, this is a tall order to get lots of program into a very small footprint, and, and I agree that it, there, there is room here because of the new location of the lot. However, it seems that monthly, someone, you know, we, we get applicants who, who just can't make it work within the pretty, they're very prescriptive guidelines for the, for the dadas, and I feel like, I'm conflicted by giving, giving an inch. In, in any situation, the facts of this applicant notwithstanding, it's a, it's a tough spot for us to be, and I, I agree that there is room solely in this case because of its location, but I'm hesitant to allow this applicant quarter that's not given to others.
I second that.
Well, we do have a motion, and it's properly second on the floor. If there's no more discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries. 18 Shelby Avenue. Three hours into the meeting, and this is the first time I get to talk. Did that on purpose. Okay. Yeah. 818 Shelby Avenue. You may recognize there was an application here in July for infill construction, and that application was disapproved. We're back with the same applicant, and it's now an application for a two-story structure on the vacant lot shown there. Actually, the lot to the right where there's a little church is now vacant also. We'll be seeing an application there in coming months, but right now, we're looking at 818 vacant lot. It is proposed as a duplex with a front-to-back orientation. There's a, the party wall is essentially parallel to the street, so there's a unit facing the street and a unit facing the rear, and there is an outbuilding, a detached outbuilding at the rear of the lot. Since the lot's zoned for two units, the outbuilding is not a dada. Although it's, like I said, it's front-to-back, it still presents itself as an, with an orientation to the front, to Shelby Avenue. And the building will be 30 to 33 feet tall, sort of as, following grade as it drops there, with a two, excuse me, a three-foot-tall foundation at the lowest part of the lot. The facade, the front of the building, will be 36 feet wide. Essentially, the front and rear components, both are 36 feet wide. And then this center section there, you can see, is actually going to be three feet narrower. It stepped in 18 inches on each side. The total depth of the building, front-to-back, is 72 feet, but again, that has a narrower section in the building that staff thought helped break up the massing. Also, this front projecting gable and recessed, or not recessed, but inset porch on the front is on the right side and on the rear unit that's on the left side, and by putting them in opposition to each other, left and right, that further helps to break up the massing one side to the other. Overall, staff found the height and massing of the building to meet the guidelines for scale of new construction. Here is the east or left side of the building, and then there to the right side, the west side. Very similar, like I said, it's essentially mirrored except, except for here. On the right side, there are two round balconets or Juliet balconies. On the second story, these features are not typical of historic houses, but their impact, but they're very shallow, I think you can see on the site plan, and staff felt that their impact was minimal. There is also a third-story roof deck on this side of the building. Staff does have concerns about the visibility. Staff does have concerns about the visibility of this feature and the form of this feature. Roof decks are not typical of the historic context. Onto the rear, like I said, is similar to the front. Just a quick look at the outbuilding. It is a two-story, two-bay, probably four-car garage, access from the alley. The materials of the primary building and the outbuilding will be typical of new construction and compatible with the guidelines, things like brick, cement fiber siding. Staff would request to review specific material selections prior to construction. Also, I'll just go back to the site plan for, because this is in Edgefield, and Edgefield's a historic preservation zoning overlay, all appurtenances, including paving, fences, and lighting, would also need to be reviewed. Staff, let me get to there. Staff recommends approval of the proposed infill and outbuilding with the following conditions: that the third-level roof deck is eliminated from the plan; that the brick color siding reveal roof color and all the window and door selections are approved by staff; that a paved walkway shall be added connecting the front porch to the sidewalk; that any permanent landscape features, including walkways, driveways, fences, and retaining walls, lighting, and other appurtenances are approved by staff; and also that the HVAC units are located behind the midpoint of the building on a non-street-facing elevation. And in meeting those conditions, staff finds that this proposal would meet the design guidelines for new construction in the Edgefield Historic Preservation Zoning Overlay. Okay. Thanks, Sean. Any questions for Sean? Okay. Would the applicant like to come forward and state your case? And your name and address?
Could I ask Sean one question, please?
Oh, please, sir.
Could you show me a picture of the third-level roof decks that you want to remove?
Well, do you have the, yeah, so this is, I'm going to move over here. This here is the, essentially the roof deck. Do you, if you have your printed staff recommendations, it may be a little bit more apparent on the roof plan, which I did not include in the present, the PowerPoint presentation.
Okay. I see it.
Okay.
So would it be just all this? All that gone?
That's a railing on the front, and this sort of comprises, you can sort of stand from there to there, and then this roof.
I got you. Okay, okay. I got you. Thank you.
Okay. Questions? Okay, Mitch, if you want to.
Hi, um, excuse me. My name is Mitch Hodge. I live at 1900 Cedar Lane. I'm the architect, working with Steve Burt. This is obviously our second go-around, as you recall, back here, back in July, but his, I guess, program needs have changed since then, so we've gone back through, and that's where we're doing the front-to-back duplex. He made a conscious decision to make that a front-to-back duplex, so that did appear as one house and not necessarily a side-by-side. I advised him side-by-side would probably be more, frankly, marketable, but, you know, he insisted he wanted the front and back. So we've gone back through with the owner's new needs, and we've had several meetings with Sean, just kind of shaping, making, we've gone back several times, making adjustments to this to make, you know, make it fit within this. So, you know, we're good with everything, except, you know, the one issue, you know, we would like to keep in is the roof terrace. It was in the original, the original design back in July, and there was really no mention of it as being one of the objections to that. We've had it in this, in this present submittal since day one, and we've gone back with meetings. We had some chimney elements in there, and he requested that we lose those. We lost those. There were some railing elements, so we took those, we took those away too. Now it's just basically, you know, as he instructed, is we put a sloped roof up there to conceal the terrace up there. There's, so I feel like we've reduced it significantly from what it was originally. I've got, I think you have these, but there are some 3D images. This, obviously, the elevation is pretty harsh, because this is a flat-on drawing. You'll never see those doors up there. Do you have these? Okay, okay. So, and as I said, from day one, this rooftop terrace, this is one of the driving ideas that he wanted on this, you know, on his house here. There are several rooftop terraces in the area. I just did a eight-unit development on 10th and Russell, and we've got six rooftop terraces there across the street. There's several. Steve has gone around the neighborhood, and he's been able to spot other similar rooftop terraces on new and older buildings. So there's a lot more out there than what you realize. I think the point being is that you don't see them from the street, so they're not even visible. We've gone through great lengths to hide this behind the main, the main gable roof form of the house. I realize that it's in the middle of the structure, but that actually makes it less visible. When you have it towards the back, you can see it from three sides. Here, you're only going to be able to see it from one side, and he also owns the adjacent property, so it's only going to be facing his property there. So, you know, the fact that we've, have so many of these already, we've, as I said, I just, when he bought this property, the project at 10th and Russell was under construction. Again, I had six rooftop terraces there. He was confident that we could do, you know, that we could do that. So that's the direction we proceed, so we asked that we could keep it in the project. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions for the applicant?
Mitch, I do have one. I've seen, I've seen rooftop terraces done pretty well, and to, all the way to, that's miserable and the unintended, oh, you mean, we have to get the water off? Wow, I didn't think about that.
Right.
So I'm a little curious about, and I feel like I can understand from looking at the drawings.
Yeah.
How some of those things are going to be taken care of. And I do agree that this is as minimally visible as a third-floor balcony.
Right.
Can be on projects that we reviewed. Can you talk a little bit about just how the, what some of the details are going to be at the top of the roof, and is that sort of a tactile, you know, will there be a piece of copper flashing there?
Yeah. It'll be a wall cap there, a nice, a nice, you know, fabricated metal cap there, not just, you know, it's not going to be slapped, something slapped up there. We originally had a section of railing up there, like wrought iron railing about this tall, to kind of emulate a widow's block up there, which I thought was a nice detail, but they wanted it gone, so that was not a deal breaker.
Sure.
Losing the terrace, I mean, is getting there, yeah.
So the water will just flow right through to the gutter, kind of under that?
It'll be, I'm going to do.
Or the internal?
A pair of internal roof drains, so think of it as a shower, and all that roof terrace range will go within the building there, so.
And then out and down.
Yeah, yeah. We're not going to have awkward gutters popping out.
Gutters and, yeah.
Yeah.
Suspended false roof.
He's very committed. I mean, he's, you know, it's, he's very detail-oriented. He wants this to be a super-quality project. It's not a.
Pulling off an internal roof drain is not, that's not uncommon construction, I think.
Yeah.
When you get with a framer who's like, you want me to do what? That ends up.
Right.
Negative consequences at the end of the day.
Yeah. I've done plenty, so I'm good with meeting out there.
Thank you.
So.
Any more questions to applicant? Okay, thanks, Mitch.
Thanks.
Open public hearing. Would anyone like to speak regarding this? Oh, did you want to speak? You are the applicant, so there's still time. You can come.
You guys have seen me three times now.
I'm sorry. Just state your name and address.
Do I get better-looking each time? I'm Steve Burt. I am, I live at 321 South 11th Street currently, and I own both 816 and 18 Shelby. I'm going to ask the commission for just one thing. The rooftop terrace, to me, is a really important element. Sean has been wonderful to work with, and we've had a lot of meetings with Sean. I know he's probably sick of seeing me as well, but I feel like we've gone back and forth and had a lot of positive discussion. This one element is very, very important to me, and I felt that we really have restricted it so that it's invisible from the east view completely. It is indiscernible from the floor level, and it would be visible from 816, which is a property that I own, which I, that's going to become my home, and I'm going to try to propose something within the next two months on that. I did go ahead and put together a list of just the ones that I could drive around and see. This is a dozen different properties that have rooftop terraces in Edgefield. I didn't list all the ones that Mitch was just mentioning, it, basically, the 950 to 960 Russell. I drive by those every day when I go to the gym, which means I'm lying. I really only go about two or three times a week, but in my mind, I go every day. But those are readily discernible, rooftop terraces on the third floor, a series of them in row houses. But 940 Russell is another one that is very discernible. This is the view going up to their rooftop terrace on the third floor, and you can see a front, and this is just half of that rooftop terrace. So this is very large. Our feature is 10 by 17 feet, and it is recessed. This one is very discernible, and that's 940 Russell. 931 Russell, another beautiful home, is this one, but their rooftop deck, it has, it's split into two. So this is a view of part of it from the internet, and this is the view facing out in the city, which is a beautiful view. So again, it's a very large one. This one's a little bit more hidden. This would be 800 Fatherland, and the flowers normally look really beautiful on their rooftop terrace, but not so much right now. And then another one that I took a picture of, I love this home, 817 Bosque Bell, and they've done a complete rooftop terrace on the left side. It's got two tables up there. So I know that a rooftop terrace may not be typical, but it's not uncommon, and it's important to this individual that's put a lot of time and effort into this project. So I'd really like your consideration. I'm fine with everything else. That one condition, I would like to see removed as a condition. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions anymore? Okay, thank you. Open public hearing. Would anyone like to speak regarding this project? Okay, closed public hearing. Discussion.
Okay, I think I missed it. Where is it in the guidelines, or italicized, about rooftops, terraces on rooftops?
There's a section of the design guideline, guideline that talks about roof forms being compatible with historic roof forms.
Okay. So that's not black and white.
I'll add, and I know that staff struggles with applications of inappropriate rooftop terraces or access to views, whether anybody goes up there ever or not. Again, not for us to decide. And I think as a, as a rule, it would be maybe the preference to not have to deal with them. I'll let commissioners decide for themselves how craft, you know, how well-crafted this solution is by the applicant.
I'm just reading here under Section E about porches, and that new buildings should incorporate at least one front-street-related porch. Side porches may be, may also be appropriate as a second entrance. So it really doesn't, I don't see where it specifically mentions rooftop terraces.
Those are, those are ground-floor porches. So we were following the guidelines for roof form, since this is a rooftop terrace.
Okay.
But, but as Commissioner Mosley said at the beginning, the main reason we had concern was because of the consequences. What are we going to see next that may not be appropriate? Is everybody going to have them? You don't see them historically within the roof like that, so that was our guidance.
I can, I mean, I definitely see, you know, the recommendation from staff, and I understand it. I mean, in this instance, you know, I know, and Commissioner Mosley, you know, for setting precedents and the things we talk about here, and everyone wants more. In this instance, I mean, I'm not offended or bothered by the balconies, simply because, I mean, I think they've worked really hard with getting them in a roof form. I mean, it doesn't add any additional height to the building. It's recessed, you know. So that, those are my thoughts on this particular instance. Whether that gives everyone carte blanche for doing third-floor, you know, balconies, I hope not. But as far as a new infill project in this area, with the roof form being our main concern as a commission, I mean, I think they've, I think it, I think it's a nice job and a good solution for that. So that's my thoughts on this particular third-floor balcony.
I'll just add to that, too, as well. I think, you know, I know we have to always be wary of that, but I think the way they've done this, it's pretty, pretty appropriate. Go ahead, Ben, do one.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the application at 818 Shelby Avenue, accepting the condition that the third-level roof deck be eliminated, noting that, as presented, the roof forms on the west elevation are such that it's in keeping with the general expectation and character of reforms within the district.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Motion carries. 1724 Fourth Avenue North.
This is an application for infill of a new residence duplex on this lot marked here. Staff approved demolition of this existing non-contributing building on the site earlier this month. Project is a duplex with attached carports. The front setback on the right of the slide here will be 19 feet 8 inches from the front property line, which matches the neighboring building on the bottom of the slide, which is a non-contributing, recently-built home on the corner. The front setback of the nearest contributing building is set back a few feet from that, approximately 25 feet, but due to the odd size and shape of this lot, staff finds that the setback matching the neighboring building is appropriate. The building meets the design guidelines for roof form, orientation, proportion, and rhythm of openings, and materials. Staff recommends having approval of the roofing color, windows, doors, and some trim and porch materials that were not indicated. The, the main ridge is 34 feet 10 inches from grade. The front-facing gable is marked as being a foot higher. The guidelines for Salem Town limit a building's overall height to 35 feet, so staff has made a recommendation that the height be reduced not to exceed 35 feet. Staff has also recommended that the bay on the left side of the porch in the front elevation, which reads as sort of an enclosed porch, that that be moved to the opposite side to blend in with the projecting gable on that side. And the applicant has actually already submitted drawings reflecting these conditions. Attached outbuildings are not normally appropriate because of the lot size and shape, however, basically, the bulk of the lot is only 116 feet deep, and detached outbuildings would be impracticable here. So for this reason, staff recommends approval of the outbuildings attached as proposed. The total footprint of the outbuildings is 800 square feet, so staff recommends that they be reduced in size not to exceed 750, and the applicant has reflected that change as well. In summary, staff recommends approval of the project with the conditions that the ridge height is reduced to 35 feet, the footprint of the carports does not exceed 750 square feet, that the porch bay is moved to the right side of the structure, the finished floor height is consistent with that of adjacent historic homes, staff approval of materials, and that the HVAC and other utilities are located behind the house or on a side facade beyond the midpoint. That concludes my presentation.
Okay, thanks, Paul. Any questions for Paul?
Paul, this is.
Paul, this is a question. It looks, this is not visible, this is a sort of lot within lots. It's, there's no, it's not on a corner or anything like that.
That's correct. The, the site plan that you can see there, it's sort of, I guess, the rear of the lot has been at some point kind of divided off. So it's got sort of this easement leading from the alley. So the, the main part of that lot is, is rather shorter.
Gotcha. There, the, I understand the need to separate one tenant sort of from the other. There's an upper-level porch that sort of extends over into, maybe I'm not understanding from the drawings, that kind of extends and suspends over, over nothing below. If it's not visible from the side, we don't, we probably don't need to dig too deeply down into those details. But that was really the question, is if that's visible, we may want to pay more attention to it. But I think in this case, it's more functional than anything else.
Okay, thanks, Paul. Would the applicant like to come forward, Preston, and state your name and address and your case?
Did I say that again? Preston Quirk, Quirk Designs, 2931 Berryhill Drive, Nashville, Tennessee. I really have nothing to add. Just want to say Paul's been very helpful in working through the process on this, and we're okay with the staff recommendation.
Okay, great. Any questions for Preston? All right, thank you. Open public hearing. Would anyone like to speak regarding this project? Seeing closed public hearing, discussion or a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move for approval with staff recommendations.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'll oppose. Okay, motion carries. Next is 2212 Grantland Avenue.
22, 2212 Grantland Avenue is currently a vacant lot. In June 2016, MHCC approved a design for infill and a dadu on this lot, but those structures were not built. A new owner is proposing a duplex infill and outbuilding. The outbuilding will not be used as a dadu. The lot is unusually wide at 75 feet. The proposed infill and outbuilding meet all base zoning setbacks. Staff recommends the inclusion of walkways from the sidewalk to the front porches. The proposed infill will be one and a half stories with an eve height of approximately 12 feet 6 inches above grade and a ridge height of 32 feet 3 inches above grade. The house is a little taller and a little wider than the historic houses in the immediate context. However, staff finds this to be appropriate because there are very tall houses on White Avenue, just one street behind, and because the lot is 25 feet wider than a typical lot on this block. And also, the height and width of this design are very similar to what was approved by the commission in 2016. The proposed infill is deep at 99 feet. However, because approximately 40 feet of this depth is true one-story form, staff finds that the overall scale of the house is appropriate. Staff finds that the no materials meet the design guidelines, and staff asks to approve all final material choices prior to purchase and installation. The applicant is proposing a one-and-a-half-story outbuilding that will not be used as a dwelling unit. The outbuilding and infill will be connected with covered breezeways that are four feet wide and open on both sides. The commission has approved such breezeways in the past. Staff finds that the outbuildings' height, scale, dormers, roof, and materials all meet the design guidelines. Here are some context photos for this section of Grantland. So in conclusion, staff is recommending approval of the project with a condition that staff verify the construction of the first floor height, that walkways be added from the sidewalk to the front porches, that the doors be at least half glass, and staff approve all windows and doors, staff approve a roof shingle sample, a stone sample, the materials of the floors and steps for all the porches, and all appurtenances for the site, and finally, the location of the HVAC unit. So with these conditions, staff finds that the project meets the design guidelines.
Okay, thank you very much. Any questions for Melissa?
Just that, just to clarify, the, the actual footprint would be total of 99 feet. Is that right?
The footprint.
Of the new construction.
Of the depth, yeah. The depth is 99.
The depth is 99 feet. And that, did that include the, is there an outbuilding?
It does not include the outbuilding. So if you look at this, so from basically the front walls, the rear front wall is 99 feet.
That's a long house.
It's a long house. The commission, I know, has approved two-story houses that are in like the 70 to 80-foot range, and staff was okay with the depth because so much of it is just one story in height. It's not the full two stories coming back.
So this is a story and a half.
Yeah, the house is a story and a half. But the front and the rear part is just one story.
One story.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, any more questions? Okay, thanks. Would the applicant like to come forward and state your case and your name and address?
My name is Ron Tollander. I live at 700 Amondale in Nashville. I always seem to end up almost last every time I come here, but it's entertaining, to say the least. We've worked with the staff, our architects worked with the staff, and we are in agreement with their recommendations, and we're set to go. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions for the applicant? Okay, open public hearing. Would anyone like to speak regarding this case? Okay, seeing closed public hearing. Do we have a discussion or motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move for approval with the recommendations of the staff.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
Just a comment. I think you heard me that I asked about the 99 foot. And I know that, you know, historically, when you have rhythm and spacing with my always, my view of things about sensitivity and not contrasting greatly with historic structures. So I just am always cautioned when it's slightly larger because of expansion reasons doing to, due to a lot size. So I just want to express that. Thank you.
Okay. Any more discussion? Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
I'll oppose. Okay, motion carries. Next one is 2008 Natchez Trace.
Well, 2008 Natchez Trace is an application to construct infill on a vacant lot. And the, the staff has recommended disapproval of the proposal, having found the height, width, roof form, windows would not meet the design guidelines. But our primary concern was with the front setback. You can see, I think, on the site plan here that the predominant setback, or the average setback for the street is around 37 feet, and what's proposed is like 68, 70 feet. And to be honest, or we certainly recognize that this is a, not a simple lot to build on because of the grade, and there's a stormwater crossing from the property adjacent to the south. And the applicant and I met with Metro Stormwater yesterday and got some guidance from them on how to figure out what's possible. And I think we'll be getting input from an engineer on how to handle that, the water issue. It certainly is a concern, or not, not typical for us. So like I said, we'll meet with an, or they'll get input from an engineer. And after that, we'll be better able to address that site infrastructure and then infill. All that's to say, I believe the applicant is going to request deferral. So I'll cut off my presentation there, and they'd like to say a few words. They waited all this time, so.
Yeah, sure.
Hi, I'm Adam Epstein. I live at 3704 Hobbs Road in Nashville. Been here since 84, and so I consider myself a Nashvilleian. My son was born here. My sons, my grandkids are born here, so it's wonderful. The issue with the site is, we've kind of got that setback that they'd like to keep, and then we've got stormwater. And I know, like Commissioner Stewart has dealt with this in the past with, in his practice, with stormwater and floodway buffers and flood zones. This is stormwater. The issue with this, I've got a, I've got a five-acre watershed that comes through the site that we have to size a ditch for because they want a ditch, they don't really want a pipe. The neighbor next door has been doing this probably for 50 years, and it never, it would never happen today. Under the new guidelines, that's what he's doing wouldn't work. But it's existing, we have to deal with it, it's an implied easement. All I'm looking for, is there any variance between, we're going to be somewhere between three feet from where they want to be and 40, and 27 feet from where they want to be, depending on what the engineer comes back with. All the other issues Sean and I have discussed, and I think we've got most of those, or all of those, worked out on the other design guideline issues. So the only thing we'll be coming back for when we defer this is how far back can we go, depending on what the engineer comes back with. We've got to deal with the ditch, and we've got to deal with the water because we don't want to back up the water on the neighbor who's been there for 50 years. So all I want to hear was some discussion of, am I barking up the wrong tree, or are we, something, it's sort of an extreme topo water drainage uniqueness of the lot situation. Because the house next door is 96 feet back from the road, so the water goes right through their front yard and then continues on to Fairfax, which right, we're between Fairfax and.
Barton.
Barton, yeah. So we're catching the water from the neighbor, really from the neighbor next door, there really isn't anything beyond that. But stormwater's determined, it's a five-acre watershed. So we have to size a ditch for a five-acre watershed. Plus, we have to give them an easement for it, and so they can take care of it in the future. And they have a certain size, the minimum size for an easement. I think it's 10 foot for a ditch and 15 foot for anything else. So we don't really have a lot of room coming down the side of the property. So that's all I want to hear, and defer until next week.
Okay, you can stay there for this one. So Commissioner, so he, he's asked for deferral, so we're going to defer it for 30 days to the next month's meeting. But if you do have any direction that he is interested in hearing, so if anyone has some comments based on that, I want to open that up for you guys right now.
So, and so I noticed in the reading of this one, the, the disapproval was based not only on the setback, but on the height and scale of the building. So I think probably some attention needs to be paid to those. I think the front elevation looks appropriate to what you see on Natchez Trace, but I think that some of the other elevations probably could work with the staff to, to get it more in scale with, with what we found in that neighborhood, so.
Yeah, and I think Sean and I have already discussed much of that, and I think we're really close on that. That's not a concern of us as much as with the setback.
There's a specific, there was a case in Salem Town that, while not in this extreme, it was certainly noticeable. It was twi, you know, the setback was necessary for twice what, what one would expect, and it, it was exacerbated by being a corner lot, so it was that much more noticeable. Well, actually, that, that may, because it was a corner lot, it may not have looked at a place where you've kind of got, at least there'll be two of you that won't be compliant with the 35 feet. So I think we've done it before, and in that case, there was a sewer easement that just wasn't, it wasn't going to go anywhere.
Yeah.
The solutions were, as an applicant and property owner, what are you going to do?
Yeah.
Somebody needs to say what's going to happen. So I don't think we're deaf to those, you know, to those realities of development of this lot. And certainly, once you have gotten engineers' feedback as to what your options are, we would certainly entertain that as a, I don't want to use the word hardship, I've been reprimanded for that before, but an encumbrance to, you know, what your rights would be otherwise if it were not.
Yeah, and that's all we're looking for, because the rest of these issues, I think we'll come back with a list of, that we've agreed to all those things. And it's just the setback is one of our set in stone things because of stormwater.
Yeah, I would tell you, make sure you have your engineer, if not present, but definitely his report. And then if stormwater, could make sure that they, if they're not present, which they may not be, but they've just related to staff what their, you know, what their stance is on it.
Yeah, what we plan to do, we've, we've met with Steve Mishu over there, who's longstanding in the department, and we'll have something worked out with him before we come back.
Okay.
So at least have an email or a letter or something, because the way, the length of these meetings, I don't think I can key a Metro employee to stay that long.
All right, okay.
I know, except for these guys, sorry.
They're not going around.
Yeah.
All right, well, thank you very much.
Sure, thank you.
2008 Natchez Trace is deferred until next meeting.
Yeah, we're just going to look for a 30-day deferral, and if we have to defer again, we'll ask again.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks a lot.
So the next one is one that was pulled off consent agenda, 1430B Greenwood Avenue.
Okay, so 1430B Greenwood Avenue is a vacant lot. In September 2017, MHCC approved a design for infill development and for garage on the slot. The applicant is now seeking approval to add a side bay to the previously approved design to add a rear chimney and to alter window openings. You can see on the site map that the lot is unusual with its triangular shape and just a small sliver of frontage along Greenwood Avenue. On the left is the previously approved site plan, and on the right is the new proposal. The front setback has not changed. The addition of the bay on the house's left facade will bring the house out to this 10-foot setback line from the alley. The chimney will not be added, well, a chimney will be added to the rear, but it is not counted in the setback measurements, and therefore doesn't affect the rear setback. No changes to the rear, to the rear outbuilding are proposed on this application. The bay will bring the maximum width of the house to 48 feet 6 inches. The house is staggered in width, so at the front, it is 28, it is 30 feet 8 inches wide. After a depth of 27 feet 6 inches, the width expands to be 42 feet 8 inches wide. The proposed bay, which will bring the width to 48 feet 6 inches, is located approximately 40 feet 6 inches back from the front of the house. In the median area, the widths of the houses at the front range from approximately 29 feet to 40 feet. The front of the house meets the historic context, but the rear portions that expand to 42 feet 8 inches and 48 feet 6 inches do not meet this historic context for width. Staff, however, finds that the extra width is appropriate in this instance because of the unusual shape of the lot and the fact that the extra width will not even occur until behind the rear walls of the two adjacent historic houses. The proposed one-story bay will not occur until over 110 feet from the front property line. Okay, so here is the front facade. So on the left was what was previously approved, and on the right is what the current proposal is. The proposed revisions add a one-story bay at the back part of the left elevation. The bay will be six feet wide at the front and 13 feet 2 inches deep. The bay will have a maximum height of 13 feet from grade. Changes to the front facade also include adding window transoms over one of the paired windows and changing the details of the gables. Staff finds that all these changes meet the design guidelines. So here is the, which side of the facade is this? This is the left side facade. So again, on the left is what was previously approved, and on the right is the current proposal. Changes on this facade include adding the bay and adding a rear chimney. The chimney at the back will be seven feet wide and four inches, six, four feet 6 inches deep, although chimneys are not typically counted towards the overall footprint of the size of new construction. Here are the rear facade. Changes to the rear facade include, we can see part of the bay, the chimney, and changes the window openings, all of which staff find to be appropriate. And then here is the right facade, and on this facade, the major changes include changing the window openings. So staff recommends approval of the project with the following conditions, the finished floor height, because this is the finished floor heights of adjacent historic houses. Staff approve the materials of the windows and doors, approve a brick sample, and approve the roof shingle color and the location of the HVAC. With these conditions, staff finds that the proposed application meets Section 2B for new construction in the Eastwood Neighborhood Conservation zoning overlay design guidelines. Also wanted to note that you did receive some public comments via email, and that should have been passed out to you prior to the meeting.
Okay. Thank you, Melissa. What the, any questions? Okay, thank you. Would the applicant like to come forward and please state your case and name and address?
Good evening. I'm Nathan Weinberg. I live at 3944 Moss Rose Drive in East Nashville. We've just made a minor change to the house, and I'll sort of give you some background of why. We, without really taking into account much of anything else, went back and were examining our floor plan and realized that we wanted to be making sure that whoever lives in this house and makes it their home has a couple of additional features, that including the fireplace, which doesn't affect the side of this house, but that they have a living space and a dining room that's a little bit more sufficient. Because it was at the back of the house, we didn't anticipate that it would be much of a challenge, but we're obliged, and we felt it was appropriate to bring it to historic. And so that's why it's there, and that's why it's in front of you again. We'd like to get moving on the project. We think it's a nice addition. The other things on the front of the house. The other things on the front of the house, we went back, as we do, and looked and examined it and thought that the original one, while nice, was maybe a little boring. And so we just added a couple of decorative features to make the front of the house, as well as the sides, actually, just look a little bit more inviting. The expansion of the window openings on the sides in particular, I think, are nice. And they'll add a lot of natural light to the home. And so this is, that's why I'm here. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions, applicant? Okay. Thank you. Open public hearing. Would anyone like to speak regarding this project? Please state your name and address.
Kim Kennedy, live at 1432 Greenwood Avenue, which is right next door to this proposed house. I also own an architecture and construction company in East Nashville, so I would say over 50% of our projects go through the preservation permit process. So I am familiar with the guidelines and how they apply to houses over the past nine years. When this project came before you in September, a group of us concerned neighbors prepared a six-page document and sent it to you all for review prior to the meeting. We then presented the main points during the meeting. There was no discussion and it honestly kind of felt like we weren't heard. It was approved on the basis that staff had approved it and recommended it for approval. I get that. I get this process. And while you all rely on the staff's recommendations and hard work, I also think this is a system of checks and balances. And I would like to come to you today to state that I don't agree with staff's recommendation on this project and the applicant's request to add an additional six-foot width to a house that has already been approved to have a footprint that is larger than 85% of the 33 houses on this block. So it's a big house. Staff's recommendation continually calls this addition width, this additional width a bay. My experience as an architect says a bay is two feet deep. It doesn't extend to the corner of a house. It's usually the width of two to three windows. So I don't see this as a bay. I see this as another side addition. Historic guidelines do not typically allow side additions, but due to the irregular shape of this lot, they were granted what appears to already be one side addition. This would make the second. Staff's recommendation also justifies this additional width because it sits so many feet from the property line, and this is true. But there's no mention of the fact that this irregular lot sits on a side alley, which is a public right of way. And the guidelines do state that the public and street-related facades should be more carefully reviewed. Furthermore, this is an angled side alley, so it puts the side facade of the house on complete display to the street. And I would even argue that the stair-step nature of the plan will make the house feel even more massive. So I would just ask you all to discuss this project and what precedence this sets if it's allowed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Margaret Darby, and I'm at 1423 Greenwood. I'm right across the street from this proposed house. I am not an architect and I can't say anything better than what Kim just said about the actual structure. I have to say that with this whole process, and I haven't followed historic zoning that much. I've, you know, followed Metro for the past 17 years, but not Historic Zoning Commission. And this is the third parcel in our neighborhood that I have just been really disappointed in. And the fact that the variance that is permitted from the design guidelines is so great. And, you know, we worked really hard to get these design guidelines in place. And when we have to kind of hunt down when projects are going before the board, because we don't get notice of any of these, we have to, you know, constantly stay a foot of these types of things. And then to see them just get approved and then get another bite at the apple to be even, you know, made larger in the neighborhood. There was a, there's a parcel at 1208 Chapel that once had a 700-square-foot house on it, and this commission approved a footprint of about 3,000 square feet on a 7,000-square-foot parcel. It's huge. It's totally oversized for the parcel and it's totally oversized for the neighborhood. It doesn't match any of the historic structures. This one is quite similar. It is an oversized house and staff is recommending that it be made even larger. Again, I'm just really disappointed. Oh, there's another house over on Benjamin Avenue that was allowed to be demolished. And then, once again, a house that's tall, the ridge line is taller than all the neighbors' houses has gone in. And it just seems like there's this rush to get as much money out of a piece of property and not follow the guidelines. And the guidelines say that the massing of the house needs to match and be consistent with historic neighboring structures and that, you know, I just have to say, I'm just greatly disappointed in this process. And I really hope that you will consider the guidelines when making decisions going forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, you get actually a two-minute rebuttal if you'd like to say anything regarding that.
I don't need two minutes. I know everybody's been here a long time. We're proposing an addition of about 78 feet, square feet, to the structure. That was done, as I stated earlier, specifically to make the floor plan work a little bit more for whoever would live here ultimately. This is a lot that is abutted by two alleyways, actually. There's one at the back and then one on the side. The proposed addition respects not just the alley but also the setback. It's way off of the alley. And it is so far from the street frontage that it is, it is a little, it's going to be challenging, I think, to make a case that it is affecting the street frontage much at all. I have trouble believing that the front of the house does that. It's set so far back. We've made an effort to make sure that this house fits in this neighborhood. We're mixed-mediating the house. Even with the addition of the square footage, we didn't change our pro forma to reflect it a higher price. So I've been in front of this commission and in front of the planning commission many times, and people like to say that I'm doing this to make more money on something. That's not true. This is, this is, this is not reflecting a price adjustment at all. It is simply reflecting a floor plan adjustment. So thank you for considering.
Thank you. Okay, closed public hearing. Discussion? Certainly, this is a, you know, we do always have a little more, give a little more leeway when it's such an unusual site. I guess, you know, just as the questions that were brought up, why this was brought up, consent is, are we giving it too much leeway? Maybe if that can help jar some conversation?
I don't, I don't mind, I mean, I like the, you know, I don't mind the, I think it overall, not considering the additional width, the other changes that were made, I think are nice. I like the changing of a few of the windows and some of the rhythm, opening, you know, just the look of the thing. But, you know, I guess I, you know, I do, I might mirror the neighborhood's concerns about additional, additional width. I mean, I know it's a staggered lot, but, and it's not on the front, you know, it's on the back, so that's, I guess, what I'm grappling with here. But, you know, it is wider originally than this, you know, in the context of the other homes. And then this is again additionally wider. And it is on the alley, which I think makes it more visible. You know, it's not just like right up next to another house where it's kind of like, oh, you can't see it. You know, it is on the alley. So I think it is more visible in that case that, so I might mirror some of the neighbors' concerns about the additional width specifically of this new proposal.
Any comments, Monet?
I honestly probably don't recall everything that was said during the prior, because it seems like it's an addition and would we be not, you know, what we approved before is, has to stand. And this is just an addition, not just, but it's an addition. So I'm not sure we can say this is not an approved project, other than what, you know, the width and specifically what you've mentioned concern with. And definitely, we did get some public comment, I guess, from the other. I mean, it is an unusual lot. I mean, I think that's where we grappled with in the last meeting, is that because of that unusual shape. And, you know, we always try to do our best to work with what we can under, under the guidelines.
I'm having a problem with the additional width, too. It just seems like this fills this lot so, so much. And that's the only comment I have to make.
And again, also, because I think we struggled with this because of the lot last time. So when we're looking at an addition, then it does give us second thought on adding more to the square footage. And understandably, the applicant has good reason for that, but it is a challenging decision.
Yep, Cyril, Cyril or Ben?
I don't, I don't think I was at the meeting. I don't, I don't recall being at the meeting when this was discussed before. When I look at the plan, I do see the constraints of the site. I think it is a well-crafted design as far as fitting into that neighborhood, not overwhelming the, the height and the elevation, front elevation, and trying to match with those. The, I can see why they'd want to put the addition on the side. I'm not sure if that's a significant departure from the prior approved plans, but open for commission discussion on that. You know, I guess the big thing is, you know, a 2,360-square-foot footprint is, I think, the scale issue that is different from the other homes. It's not something, I mean, we see that in almost every neighborhood we work with, is that the houses people try to build today, whether they own them or are going to sell them, are larger than the ones that were typically there. So it's something that we struggle with as a commission and as a city, so.
All right, Ben. Any comment?
In, in looking at the site plan and certainly being, taking into account the advocacy of neighbors who look to get this in, the question becomes, you know, the two adjacent houses are 30 feet in width. And certainly, in the original proposal, this, you know, this house respected that in its frontage and then took advantage of a very skinny lot in the front, can't meet the setback, and the lot widens. I think it's a logical progression that the house, instead of being long and the same shape, would, would take advantage of a side, you know, the side widening. Coming back yet again and getting to, you know, a bit beyond what the, what the, what could be demonstrated in the overall, you know, in the district as the widest house, pushing, pushing up against things that we approved in the past, I think, in its, in the configuration here specifically. I don't, I don't have any definitive comment that's going to sway it one way or the other.
I appreciate the comments. Well, everyone is, we had a comment. Would anyone like to craft a motion? And let's, maybe we'll get some more discussion out of it?
I will. I move that we accept the staff recommendation as presented today.
Okay. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Yes, not okay.
No second, so motion fails.
Okay.
Thanks for putting a motion.
Mm-hmm.
Can we get another motion? Oh. Go ahead, do you have another motion?
No, not another motion. I was just going to say that my comment is that the proposed improvement, if you will, is not a significant addition in terms of space. I understand the neighbors' concerns. Obviously, you don't want something that's disproportionate, but as Commissioner Stewart has said, that we battle with that on a consistent basis because of the size and the scope of living and dwelling spaces as they are today versus previously. They are obviously getting larger. But I, I don't have a problem with what's been proposed, and I respect the fact that it was stated that the additions will actually add to some of the context of these surrounding properties as well, the chimney and other attributes.
Okay. Thank you.
That's why I made the motion.
Well, could I get another motion? Kayla?
I move to approve staff recommendations with, I don't know, with a new condition that the building, that the home at 1430B Greenwood Avenue retain the originally approved width.
We have a motion. And we can talk more in discussion, but do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Discussion?
So is that different than the prior approval?
I would just say like the, the approval that was originally given was just, so just not with the bay. Does that make sense? I don't know if that's a good motion.
There were some architectural changes to accoutrements, if you will, flourishes on the building that the applicant had submitted. So I think this is not allowing or not approving additional widths to the house. A question or clarification I would have is that is not delimiting to a further redesign of a floor plan that might still have the same lot coverage but wouldn't be any wider if we wanted to give some guidance in that regard or just be clear in that width is, you know, if the width is, going wider is objectionable, that if an application were to come back, that was that wide but maybe had a different configuration, if there's some guidance to the staff on that. Maybe they don't need guidance. I just wanted to be, make sure we were clear as to what, what might be built.
I think this diagram at best, and you don't let me put words in your mouth, but I think this best diagram best describes what her motion is, that the bubbled area would not be approved.
Yeah, well, the bubbled area on this diagram also includes that chimney, which it looks like it has remained within the original width. So then the bubbled area of the additional width of the building, the little jut out, but not necessarily including the chimney, I do not have a problem with the chimney.
Just, so that is, do you guys understand what her, which I think is pretty clear? Okay. Do you want to look at that diagram again?
Sure.
Okay. Per motion. Okay. Any more discussion or questions about that?
Probably not with Claire.
We have a motion. We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Motion carries.
I'm going to make the second, I'm so sorry. Thank you.
Okay, so we have, we have gotten Kwan to defer Metro legal meeting procedures.
So y'all don't want to hear from me?
Oh, no.
But. I'm a pawn.
Kwan, Kwan, no.
But we are required, we are, we are now at the end of the year, so we do have to have our, our other training. And I think you must be Caroline. So if.
We're good, we still have time.
Yeah, if you would. Do that for us.
Do you want to sit here, Caroline?
While we've been meeting, Nashville has been awarded a MLS soccer team, and they already have a losing record.
Already have a what?
They already have a losing record. That's how long the That's how long the meetings.
All right. I won't. All right, Sean.
Okay, the first question is, do you eat Nashville hot chicken?
Let's see if I can. Yes, we still are.
Yeah.
We have not adjourned.
Go with it.
We're talking.
I'll just go with the pink.
You sure?
Do I have a clicker over here?
Yeah.
Sorry. The clicker.
What's that?
This is just forward? Okay. Good evening, commissioners. For those of you that don't know me, my name is Caroline Eller. I'm a historic preservationist with the Metro Historical Commission. Our agency works in tandem with the MHCC to document history, save and reuse buildings, and make the public more aware of the necessity and advantages of preservation in Nashville and Davidson County. I am here to provide some information to the zoning commission that will aid in the assessment of and decisions pertaining to historic properties. And I'm going to be very cognizant of your time this evening, but I do want to thank you for allowing me to present to you. Purpose of this presentation is to provide a brief overview of how we determine what constitutes a historic property or resource. The main aspects that will be addressed are the criteria of age, significance, and integrity, how certain materials and systems create character-defining features of historic buildings, and how to develop a historic context using time, theme, and place as a basis for evaluation. Significance for local historic districts and overlay properties is typically based upon nationally established preservation criteria, such as those under the National Register program or the use of local criteria. Boundaries for these properties should be set around the most intact collection of historic resources and should take community planning considerations into account. These historic zones require the HCC to review alterations and demolitions, as well as new construction within those boundaries, and decisions to be made using design guidelines. The most important thing to note is that protection of historic properties comes from the local zoning and design controls. When evaluating a historic resource, we assess three aspects: the property's age, level of significance, and presence of architectural or material integrity. Generally, properties must be at least 50 years of age or more to be considered historic places. In order to assure adequate historical perspective and avoid judgments based on current or recent popular trends, the 50-year period is generally used as a guide for evaluating the historic resources worthy of preservation. However, a property less than 50 years old may be significant if it is of exceptional importance at the national, state, or local level. One local example that may meet these standards before the 50-year mark is the Hindu Cultural Center, seen here and built in 1990. Pardon? Yes. All, yeah, all of the examples I've got labeled are mostly in Davidson County. The 50-year age benchmark is simply a guideline. The idea of the 50-year period is twofold: one, to divorce the often emotional ties to an event, person, thing, and to allow time for scholarly evaluation, time to really consider the impact on history that the property had. The evaluation process can be guided by a simple question: if not for blank, then what? If this event or events had not occurred, what would have happened? If this person had not lived or worked here, how would history have been affected? What impact did the building's structure or object site have on future similar projects? There are some instances where a period of significance might creep up into the 50-year period, where we won't require justification for exceptional significance. For example, if you have a strongly defensible period of significance for a property where the bulk of significance is more than 50 years, this creep should generally be no more than five years. Historic significance is the importance of a property to the history, architecture, archaeology, engineering, or culture of a community, state, or the nation. Historic significance must be demonstrated through documentation and established context. What is the story behind a building or district? What documentation exists to support the level and area of significance? For example, a downtown historic commercial district that includes a post office, courthouse, and local businesses may have significance in government, commerce, and architecture. Historic maps could show a central business district as functioning historically as the commercial center of a community. Another thing we look at is the level of significance. This is the geographic area, national, state, or local, for which a property has been found to have importance. It is an assessment we make by comparing the property to similar types of properties. Most overlay historic properties have local significance, like Bluefield Historic District in Donaldson. Some historic properties have state significance, such as the State Capitol Building. Fewer have national significance, such as Jubilee Hall on the campus of this. There are multiple criteria we use to assess the historical significance of a resource. The property may be significant for its association with historic events, important people, distinctive architecture and design, or archaeological potential. Most historic districts have significance under historic activity, like community planning or commerce, and are significant for architecture as a collection of resources that exhibit certain styles and building forms. Just because there is only one example of a resource does not automatically imbue it with importance, nor does the presence of a singularity or oddity mean that the property is significant. It might be interesting, it might be unique, but is not necessarily important. Rare surviving examples of a once-common or important property type can be important. Integrity and context are needed to justify significance for these types of resources. Evaluating properties on wider significance means broadening the geographic context. However, mere association with a nationally important theme, for example, does not equate to national significance. Like post offices and Rosenwald schools, many properties are local manifestations of nationally significant themes, but they may only be significant at local or state levels. Historic integrity is the authenticity of a property's historic identity, evidenced by the survival of physical characteristics that existed during the property's prehistoric or historic period. The seven aspects of integrity include location, design, setting, materials, feeling, workmanship, and association. When evaluating integrity, it is important to determine if the property would be recognized by someone from its period of significance. Does it look like it did in the past? We evaluate the presence or absence of character-defining elements when determining eligibility. Character-defining features are what makes a resource unique and worthy of preservation and recognition. These features can include individual design elements, excuse me, and materials, or building-wide systems and structures. Windows are a major character-defining feature of most historic buildings. Original windows and openings should be retained for individual buildings. If a building has had several windows replaced or altered, it may not be considered National Register eligible or contributing within a district. Wall cladding, such as original wood siding, is also important to retain as a major character-defining feature of a building. Though exceptions can sometimes be made for a district, the application of nonhistoric siding such as vinyl can severely alter the character and diminish the integrity of the building. Some of the common wood siding patterns include clabbard, tongue-and groove, shiplap, and board and batten. The presence of stone siding and details, such as arches, columns, and chimneys, can also greatly contribute to the architectural character of a building or district. Log buildings and construction details are also very important to protect. While not unusual to see in Tennessee, these resources can be recognized for their architectural significance, especially where tied to important historic events and people. The Frontier Revival House on the right was built in 1935 and is located in the Jackson Park Historic District. Historic masonry walls, including the mortar joints, are major and highly visible character-defining elements. If covered with nonhistoric siding, the integrity of the building can be significantly impacted, either due to resulting deterioration or overall altered character. Trim detailing and porches can also greatly contribute to the historic character of a building. Removal or alteration of historic materials or addition of nonhistoric details, such as brackets or balustrades, is not recommended and can detract from the historic design. If these historic details are altered or missing, the character can change significantly and integrity can be lost. Porch elements, including steps, columns, balustrades, and roof lines, can lend a significant amount of character to a building. The example on the left demonstrates how a seemingly minor alteration of a porch can result in a major change in character and negative impact to the building's overall integrity. The wraparound porch on the right is a significant design element of this building, and if removed, would completely alter the form and character of the resource. Original door openings and configurations are also very important to retain. The extreme example above demonstrates how an otherwise largely unaltered church was significantly affected by the addition of a nonhistoric, incompatible, drive-through entrance. This changed the design and functionality of the building so much that the overall integrity was diminished. The presence of additions does not necessarily preclude a building from having integrity or being National Register eligible or having contributing status in a district. Historic additions, those that are 50 years of age or older, are considered part of the historic fabric. Well-designed, distinctly nonhistoric additions of a reasonable size, such as the lower-right photo, can also preexist or be added and not jeopardize integrity. Egregious, incompatible additions that detract from the building's character typically prevent it from having sufficient integrity to be considered National Register eligible or sometimes contributing in a district. Context is the basis for evaluating a resource and why it is important. This is the comparison with other historic properties of a similar typology, style, or classification. By placing the property in its proper context and providing background on why it exists, we can make the basis for a case of significance. Context is often closely tied to the physical environment in which the resource is located, within a district, city, county, or a larger scale. We must determine the factors that explain the existence of the resource being evaluated. This is the who, what, where, when, and where, excuse me, this is the who, what, where, and when, and mostly why of a property. Context boils down to essentially three elements: themes, such as railroad resources; time, like 20th century or a period between 1900 and 1910; and place, such as Davidson County. Context is defined by the thematic, temporal, and geographic factors that surround and define the property. The theme may be broad or narrow and may direct the potential criterion used to evaluate both significance and integrity. A broad theme might be transportation or engineering resources, while a more specific theme might be stone-arched bridges or mid-century library architecture in Davidson County. The time or period in which a property is evaluated may be broad: domestic architecture of the 20th century; or narrow: the residential designs of the New Deal era; or specific: the date something occurred. We can evaluate resources based on the widest geographic spread, such as post office designs nationwide, or the most specific, such as historic commercial buildings along Lower Broadway. Developing a historic context essentially means getting at the heart of the stories connected to a resource. When and where was it built? Why? By whom? For what function? How is this part of a larger development or trend? We must identify the theme in which it is connected and evaluate the resource within its geographic area in order to determine the amount of significance that the resource has. In historic districts, a single, simple historic house might not hold much significance if evaluated individually, but if looked at within the larger collection of a district, it might be contributing to a significant community development or collection of architectural resources. The Metro Historical Commission provides technical resources to property owners and researchers who want to better understand historic properties. Our Researching Your Historic Nashville Home brochure offers several tips for initiating historical research and locating source documents like deeds, maps, city directories, and historic photographs. Once we determine where historic properties and resources are located, we can recognize them with local landmarking, National Register nominations, or local historic district overlays. In these districts, contributing and non-contributing status is assigned and taken into consideration when the Metro Historic Zoning Commission reviews proposed alterations or demolitions. Information is stored on Metro Maps for public access and access by other Metro departments. And if you'll allow me, I just wanted to make a brief announcement about a new grant fund that is available for historic commercial properties. This is a fund that's been allocated by the mayor's office, and the council has approved $150,000 in the fiscal year 1718 budget for the program to assist in the rehabilitation of historic commercial buildings within census Tier One tracks that are located in Davidson County. There are historical criteria that must also be met. The property that applies must be contributing status within one of your overlay districts, or it must meet the criteria for eligibility to be contributing within one of those districts. Or it could be individually listed or eligible for individual listing in the National Register of Historic Places, as determined by our commission or the state. Or it could be contributing status within a district that is listed or determined eligible for listing in the National Register.
So the, it says Tier One, at least 65% of households are at or below 80% of area. What does that mean?
I think that got cut off. Area median income, I believe, is the terminology. Sorry about that. The key points for this grant program, and there is more information available through the mayor's office of economic and community development, the grants will range from $5,000 to $50,000. They will cover 50% of the documented investment of the applicant. It does require a minimum $10,000 project, and it's a reimbursable grant. This is for buildings that are valued or assessed at less than $1 million, and it must be used for exterior construction work only that will be reviewed by your commission. Local landmarking is another requirement to help protect the city's invested funds with these projects and to also protect against future inappropriate alterations or demolitions. The current application period closes December 31st. We are trying to encourage applicants to apply as soon as possible. It may reopen, depending on the number of applications that we get, but eventually we're hoping to be able to offer this countywide. So if there are any questions about the presentation or the grant, I'd be happy to answer them. We have sent out notices to neighborhood organizations, council district members, merchants organizations, we've put it on our social media sites, and the mayor's office has done all of those things as well. So we've really tried to reach out and get the word out. There were some handouts at this meeting that were also provided on the table for those that came in, but we are really trying to get the word out as best as possible before the application deadline.
I've brought it up with applicants when I've met with them over the past couple of weeks, too.
And we do have flyers in our office. For anyone that walks in, we've got them available on the front desk.
I know, I hate to prolong this meeting, but here goes. So if you don't, if nobody applies, do you lose this grant?
Not that I know of, but some of those details might be better left to discuss with Tim Walker.
Okay.
As of our Monday commission meeting, we didn't have any applications yet. I've been told that sometimes applicants wait until the end of the period, like with some of our preservation awards. We're hoping that some will come out of the woodwork in the next couple of weeks.
All right. Well, thank you so much for the presentation.
You're welcome.
Thank you, commissioners, for your, thanks, thanks, commissioners, for your patience. Any questions? Last comment? And we had a good 2018-17. Look forward to seeing you guys in 18. Merry Christmas.